Good evening. Welcome to the meeting of the Board of Selectmen, or Select Board, whatever your preference is, of the Town of Yarmouth, of June 6, 2023. This is going to be a remote, excuse me, a hybrid meeting. And one of our participants of this board, Mr. Peter Smith, will be separated from us geographically, but will be coming in to participate in the meeting. And we will hook him up as soon as we can. Because this is a hybrid meeting, the following notice has to be read into the record. This is the formally advised as required by General Laws, Chapter 30A, Sections 18 through 25. In pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, an act relative to extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during a state of emergency, signed into law in June 16, 2021, as extended by Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023. The Yarmouth Board of Selectmen will hold a public meeting on Tuesday, June 6, 2023, at 6:00 PM in the Hearing Room, Yarmouth Town Hall, 1146 Route 28, South Yarmouth. The public is welcome to attend either in person or via the alternative public access provided below. And that Zoom meeting information is on our website with the various ways you can come in by mobile phone, or telephone, or by computer. So we'll begin our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the first item is announcements. And I do want to make one announcement, at least one. I don't know if any board members or our administrator will have any additional announcements. But as some of you may know, the library is under evaluation, the library system, as to whether or not the village libraries should be maintained, or there should be a central library. And there's been various commentary on Facebook about that. One of our selectmen, they put a notice on there simply to alert people that this was an upcoming item, and they should make their wishes known either way. And people were making very specific comments in response to that notice stating what their actual position was, most of which was to preserve the village libraries as they are. But that's not the purpose for which the notice was put on there. The notice was put on there on Facebook to let people know that they should participate, to let that body know what their wishes were. So there is going to be a listening session on this Thursday, June 8, from 6 o'clock to 8:00 PM at the South Yarmouth Library. So we encourage people who have feelings on this issue, who want to be heard on this issue, or who want to be educated in looking, look at what the alternatives are to attend to attend that meeting. Does anyone else have any, anything? No? Bob?
A couple of quick ones. And we're going to talk about this at great length this evening, but there's some other listening sessions on behalf of the planning board for the accessory dwelling unit bylaw. There's a listening session on June 7, 6:00 PM, at the Town Hall Hearing Room. That's tomorrow evening right here. And there's another one on June 14, 2023, at the Yarmouth Senior Center. And on June 26, 2003, at 6:00 PM, at the Yarmouth Fire Station Number 2 up in Yarmouthport. So they're trying to hit all of the neighborhoods. And that information is on the town's website. And just very quickly, on behalf of the town, I'd like to announce to anyone who's out there watching that we're hiring here in the town of Yarmouth. We are making a major initiative, both for all of our volunteer positions. We have many vacancies on a wide number of boards and committees. And we also have a pretty strong, growing number of paid positions available. And the pay is pretty good. The benefits aren't bad, and it's not even as stressful as people think. So I just want to encourage everyone to check out the town website, see those volunteer opportunities, see those jobs that are available, and participate in your town.
Okay, good. Thanks for that. And we'll restate what those dates are on the accessory apartments when we get to that. But it's good to give people a heads up, and those that maybe aren't in attendance later will have been notified by you giving them those dates. Thank you. All right, the next item is public comments. Does anybody have any public comments? Yes. Everybody that has a public comment, go in your microphone, identify yourself. Just so you know, this is not a forum for back and forth discussion with the board. It's just for you to let us know what your feelings are on a particular topic.
Hi, my name is Jim Hoare. I live in Yarmouthport. Been there since 1985. I'm the current coach of the high school. Been there for 43 years, been coaching for almost 50. And I'm speaking to the board specifically about recreation and the commission. And I've come to my knowledge through multiple sources that one of the members on the commission is being told that her time is up. It's time for her to move on. I think that's a travesty. Debbie Clark, in particular, I've known as long as I've lived in town. She's done more for the youth in this town than anyone that I know of, whether it's basketball, softball, sailing, anything that's been needed done, working for the road races, that she raises money. She's helped fill the landfills. She's got Peter Homer, excuse me, Peter Homer's Park, she was involved in that. She is Yarmouth. She is what we want more people to be doing. You don't have to ask her twice to do something. Okay? Kids that I've had in my track teams have known Debbie their whole lives. And they speak nothing but great things for her, and she is the heart and soul of the Recreation Commission. To be told that it's time for you to move on, I think that's, no one has that right to say that to anybody. She'll tell you when she's done. You take that away from her, she would just die. She lives for this. She lives for the kids in this town. And I've found more kids have benefited from her tutelage than anyone else that I've known in all my years of coaching. So I hope the selectmen realize what a gem of a person that they have in the Recreation Commission, who does this for nothing, is always there all the time, has never been told no when she's been asked to do something. So I really hope you guys think about that. And I worked for the sailing program for over 30 years. She was one of our mainstays. And I think if you tell her to leave, you're going to hurt a lot of people, not just her, but kids. And we are in the kid business, at least I am, and I know she is. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Coach Hoare. Anyone else?
Yes, I'm Debbie Clark. I'm one of the Yarmouth Rec Commissioners.
Speak into the microphone. Don't be quiet. Speak to us so we can hear you.
Yes, I'm Debbie Clark. I'm one of the Yarmouth Rec Commissioners. And I know my appointment is up in July of 31. And I've always just rolled over. I never had someone come up to me and say, you know, you want younger people, new ideas. I still have some ideas. And I know when I'm going to be ready to go. This is my forte, is the kids and the community, people in this town, and what they want. They come to me, and I try to indulge them in whatever they need. And now it's like the Sandy Pond Park there, and Fred Thatcher Park. I've had a lot to do with that, along with Dorcas. And I can read this letter, but you, all of you have it, I'm sure. So I don't want to waste your time. I just want you to know that I'm sincere, and I really do not want to leave with everything that's gone on in my life. This is my savior. It really, really is. So I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Vida?
Vida Morris. Mr. Chairman, congratulations. Many of us are happy that you will be continuing in the chairmanship, and we can be assured that your actions and your decisions will be based solely on what is good for this town and for its residents. So unlike some of your colleagues, who seemingly can't help injecting their personal or politically motivated agendas into everything, giving us such doozies as regifting Native American artifacts, or organizing the redesign of the town seal, this latter as a patronizing virtue signaling device, since it was not initiated by the Native Americans. With respect to the town seal, I happened to be working in the town clerk's office when the responses to the survey started coming in. One such response, which just happened to be from a Native American, caught my eye. The woman suggested that the money required for the redesign of the seal would be better spent on educating the children of Yarmouth. How eloquent. That put a period and an exclamation point, and dissolved the hapless committee, for goodness sakes. I apologize for the digression, and good luck to you.
Thank you, Vida. And thank you for your kind remarks. Anyone else on public comment? Okay. First item for hearing is...
There's a hand up.
We got somebody on the screen?
Norm Holcomb.
No? Oh, Norm Holcomb. Norm, can you hear me?
He's got a mute.
You're muted, Norm. Okay.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, clearly.
Good evening.
Good evening, Norm.
I was, thank you. I was just interested in knowing, I had sent a letter to the Board of Selectmen, as I'm sure you're all aware, and to our town administrator, with regard to the water problem, Wells 4 and 5, and the work that the Yarmouth Housing Authority is doing to develop the 19 acres of property along Forest Road. And about a month, I think that's now about a month ago, at least, and I think the matter had been referred to Town Council for comment. And I'm just calling, or I just would like to know when to expect an opportunity to present my information to the board, and when you'll have a response from Town Council.
Okay, I can give you this much information, and then Bob maybe can help from there. Town Council has indicated an opinion, a conclusion, on the issue. But I wanted more than that. I want something detailed, showing what the conclusion is based on, both factually and legally. And I've asked for that. And as to how long that will take, I don't know. Bob, do you have any additional information on the length of time it will take for him to respond to that?
No, I do not.
So again, Norm, I don't want to come up and say Town Council thinks they can do it or not do it, and yet, and have a naked opinion. I'm sure that would not satisfy you or anybody else. So I want it detailed, and I'll follow up on it and see where we stand, and I'll get back to you.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you very much for that follow-up. And I think it's particularly important in view of the hearing this evening concerning water rates. I think that's on your agenda. And I think I had an opportunity to take a look at the proposals for the water rate increases, which are 10% to 15% across the board increases. A substantial amount of those increases is based upon an $18 million commitment, capital commitment, I think, which exceeds all, may exceed the total of all other expenses. But an $18 million commitment for PFA action, correction for, I think, Wells 4, 5, and 10. Nothing has been said, and I'll comment later in the hearing, but nothing has been said as to the reasons for the PFA problem in those wells. And nothing is said in the presentation with regard to, there's a very substantial federal fund that has just recently, in the last week, been established to address those kinds of issues. So, you know, I'm wondering what the town is doing about that. But that will be a further discussion as part of the hearing.
All right. Thank you, Norm.
Okay.
Anyone else?
That's it, I think.
That's it. Joe Glenn. I see Joe Glenn's hand. Joe, did you want to say something in public comment?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to support what Coach Hoare said about Debbie Clark. As many people know her in the community, she may be small in stature, but she's very large in stature throughout the community. And she's done a lot for a lot of people, and she's a smiling face that everybody has known, and always good for a big hug. And that's the type of people, especially with our youth, that we need to stay involved. So as long as she's willing to stay on, I respect her commitment and hope that she's reappointed. But as usual, Mr. Chairman, any other questions that the board may have of me, I'm always available by email or phone, and feel free to do so. So thanks very much. Have a great evening.
Thank you, Joe. I just want to check in with our other selectmen. Peter, can you hear us okay?
Yes, sir. I can hear you loud and clear.
Okay, thanks. We got a great connection. Appreciate it. Are we ready to go to licensing? I think we are. First one is Sea Dog Brew Pub. And whoever's going to be speaking on behalf of Sea Dog can come up. You guys know the drill. You've been here before. If you can introduce yourselves for the record, I will then read the notice, and then you can make your presentation.
Peter Lucido, owner. Matthew Berry, manager.
Okay, thank you. The Yarmouth Board of Selectmen, acting as a local licensing authority, has received an application from Sea Dog Brew Pub, Matthew Berry, manager, 23V White's Path, South Yarmouth, for a three-day special entertainment license for Big Nick's Ride. The three days of entertainment include July 14, 2023, from 5:00 PM to 12:00 AM; July 15, 2023, from 11:00 AM to 12:00 AM; and July 16, 2023, from 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM. Entertainment will be outdoors in the front parking lot. Entertainment includes dancing by patrons, recorded music, live band up to five pieces, amplification system DJ, and a public show. A special alcohol license has been filed. The special alcohol license is for wine and malt beverages. Alcohol service hours for the front parking lot will be July 14, from 5:00 PM to 12:00 AM; July 15, from 11:00 AM to 12:00 AM; July 16, from 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM. The hearing will be held on Tuesday, June 6, 2023, in the Hearing Room at the Town Hall, 1146 Route 28, South Yarmouth. The Board of Selectmen meeting begins at 6:00 PM. Written comments will be accepted until 4:30 PM Friday, June 2, 2023, at the Licensing Department at Town Hall, or can be submitted electronically to publiccomment@yarmouth.ma.us. Verbal comments will be accepted at the hearing. Okay, we'll hear you. First question, I guess, to get you going, is why, historically, you had the one day, the day of the motorcycle event, which was, what, a Sunday generally?
Yep.
Now you want to do it Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, correct?
Correct.
All right. First question, why? Why the expansion of the activity, of the...
I can go into it.
Celebration, or whatever else you want to call it.
Yeah, so since we have the stage coming in on Friday, and the Jersey barriers coming in from the Sheriff's Department setting up on that Friday, we figured it was a good opportunity to have bands starting on Friday. And so what we did, we thought about doing this basically as a charity weekend. So what we did was, after what happened with Dr. Coach Funk, and, you know, we're thinking about the D Y Athletics, and, you know, I'm part of the D Y Hall of Fame Athletic Committee. And so on Friday night, we are going to basically have the bands from 7 to 10. We're not going to go to 11 or 12. We're going to end at 10 o'clock, with 10% of all sales for the entire day on that Friday, going to D Y athletic program, and the Dolphin Dash. And this is all in memory of Dr. Paul Funk. And so, you know, so Friday, Saturday, we are going to have another band on Saturday, just 2 to 4:00 PM in the afternoon, with 10% of the sales during that period going to Big Nick's Ride.
2 to 4?
Yeah, that's it.
Saturday?
Yep. And then Sunday was our traditional day for the Big Nick's Ride.
Okay, so the bands 2 to 4 on Saturday, and 10% is going to the same charity?
Big Nick's Ride, correct.
That's Big Nick Saturday.
Saturday and Sunday is for Big Nick.
Sunday, too.
Yep.
Okay. All right, what else do you want to say?
I mean, really, this is just, this is because it's such a, the way we looked at it as a community event, we figured, you know, because we do have the stage, the tent, the space already blocked off for the whole weekend, and just it's a good, it's a good reason for everybody to come together at this point in time.
Will the stage be facing Station Avenue?
It would be the same as previous years.
Not White's Path, right?
It's on the White's Path side, facing Station Avenue.
On the White's Path side?
Like we did the last three years now.
Did we get any public comment on this? Nothing? Okay. Does anybody in the public want to be heard on this, either in favor or in opposition? I don't see anybody. Okay, I'll go to the board. Mark?
I don't have any questions.
Oh, I do have somebody coming up here.
Hello, gentlemen. My name is Tom Murphy. I'd like to remind you that what they're doing is, there's no abuddies that would be bothered by the noise, no abuddies would be bothered by the activities that they're having, and they've done it before, and there's been no incidents. And I would recommend that you look hard at this. This is something that's good for the town, and I think the town would appreciate them. And I look forward to them being successful and raising a lot of money. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Tom.
Debbie Clark, I've known Peter many, many years, and he has done a wonderful job with the road race and contributing. And I tell you, even the kids love going down and listening to the band on Sundays. And I think he's given an awful lot to the town, and to the police, and anyone else. So I agree 100%. I'm behind him. Thank you.
Mark?
I don't have any.
Wait a minute. I see Norm on there, but I don't know if Norm wants to be heard or not. I see his name up there. Norm, did you want to be heard on this?
No hand. No hand.
He did not raise his hand.
No, he didn't raise his hand. Okay. Mark, we're back to you.
Who has the hand raised on that?
I don't see a hand.
You got a microphone?
A lot of talk, it says.
Oh, it's a mute microphone? Okay. No, I don't have any questions.
Dan?
No questions.
Dorcas?
You have the band going from 5 to 10 on Friday night, but you're looking for a liquor license and entertainment license for 5 to midnight?
We can stop it at 10. That was previous, before our last meeting with the board.
Okay.
When everybody agreed to 10 o'clock.
Right, okay.
I agree 100%.
So, yeah, that's a good, let's follow up on that, Dorcas. That's a good point. Let's talk about the entertainment versus the alcohol for a minute for this event. Those times you gave me are the only times you're seeking for the entertainment licenses?
Correct.
Which are less than what was in the notice?
Correct. Since our last meeting, we adjusted everything.
Okay, so... So Friday was 7 to 10, and Saturday and Sunday were 2 to 4 on the entertainment. Am I right or wrong on that?
Saturday was 2 to 4, Sunday 11 to 3.
Sunday was 11 to 3 on the entertainment portion?
Correct.
Okay. 11 to 3, sorry about that. I didn't get that when you spoke the first time. So that's Sunday entertainment, okay. So what I would like to do, just for clarity, is do the licenses separately. Let's do the, since we've nailed down the entertainment licenses, let's do that first, and then we'll go to the alcohol. How's that sound? Okay, so what I'm looking for is a motion to grant the entertainment licenses from Friday, which is July 14. Is that right? From the hours of 7 to 10?
Correct.
Saturday, July 15, from the hours of 2 to 4:00 PM? And Sunday, July 16, from 11:00 AM to 3:00 PM?
Correct.
Just a point of order, are we supposed to close something before we vote?
No, you're right. We probably should, we should probably...
Mr. Chairman, I move to close the public hearing.
Okay, we'll have to do a roll call because of our friend. Roll call, Dorcas.
Aye.
Dan. Peter?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
I vote aye as well. Okay, now can we have a motion to approve the entertainment licenses for the days and times I just mentioned?
Second.
All right, so let's get a vote on that. Peter?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Dan? Dorcas?
Aye.
I vote aye as well. So the entertainment licenses are granted, just as you requested them. So that's not a problem. Let's go to the alcohol. So we're looking for... Where's the alcohol? Did you break out the alcohol portion?
Next paragraph.
It's underneath that page.
Which one? This one?
Yeah, there you go.
Here?
The alcohol licenses.
Well, let me go to you. What do you, so what are you looking for for Friday, for hours for alcohol service?
10 o'clock. Same as the bands.
So 7 to 10?
7 to 10.
7 to 10, okay, hold on. 7 to 10 Friday. Okay. And how about Saturday?
2 to 4 is fine, Saturday.
2 to 4?
Yep.
Okay, how about Sunday?
11 to 3.
11 to 3? All right, so what I'm going to do now is ask for a motion to close the public hearing on the alcohol service.
So moved.
Second.
I have a roll call vote. Peter?
Aye.
Dorcas?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
I vote aye as well. All right, now what I'm looking for is a motion... All right, now what I'm looking for is a motion for the alcohol licenses for Friday, July 14th, from seven to 10 P M. Saturday, which is what, the 15th, I guess, from two to four P M. and Sunday, the 16th, from 11 a.m. to 3 p.m.
So moved.
Second.
Second. Do another roll call vote on this. Peter?
I vote aye.
Dorcas?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Dan? I vote aye as well. We see the amnesty granted on the entertainment and on the alcohol. We wish you the very best, hope you have a very successful event.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, the next licensing matter is Alpha Entertainment Group doing business as The Music Room, 541 Route 28 West Yarmouth. Who's gonna make the presentation on behalf of the music group? Music Room? Okay, good evening. You gentlemen want to identify yourselves for the record?
Yes.
Brian Zepo, geez, Brian Zeponi, the principal owner.
Scott Cornella, operations.
Okay, thank you. I'll read the notice into the record, and then you can go ahead and give us whatever information you want us to consider. Let me make sure I got the right one here. Here it is. Okay, the Board of Selectmen acting as the local licensing authority for the town of Yarmouth has received an application for amendments to the weekday and Sunday entertainment licenses currently held by The Music Room, 541 Route 28 West Yarmouth, Mass. 02673. Brian Zeponi man, is it Zepo or Zeponi?
Zeponi.
Zeponi. Manager, the current entertainment license hours are from 7 P M. to 11 P M. Tuesday through Sunday. The Music Room is seeking approval for the entertainment hours to be changed to 12 P M. to 12 a.m. Monday through Saturday and 1 P M. to 12 a.m. on Sundays. Entertainment includes dancing by patrons, dancing by entertainers, recorded music, live music, live band up to eight pieces, amplification system, theater shows, movies, light shows and public shows. The hearing will be held on Tuesday, June 6, 2023, at Town Hall, 1146 Route 28 South Yarmouth, Mass. The Selectmen's meeting begins at 6 P M. Written comments will be accepted until 4:30 Friday, June 2, 2023, at the Licensing Department at Town Hall, or can be submitted electronically to public comment at yarmouth dot M A dot U S. Verbal comments will be accepted at the hearing. So why don't you tell us what's behind your request or what's your reasons for the request?
So primarily, we want we we this sort of has been an experiment from the beginning. It's a multifaceted business, as you know, where we have a recording studio, a gallery, live performances, food, there's a restaurant and bar. And, you know, it was off to a tough start, as you guys remember, with COVID, coming out of COVID, building that place out during COVID and some of the stuff that we went through, we adhered to all of the specifications for soundproofing that were mandated by the town and basically built a fortress that contains the sound. There'd been some complaints early on. We had done a DJ night. I believe that the complaints were, after further investigation, more from the from the cars parked in the back of the lot and not sound really emanating from the building itself, which contains the sound. Really, the reason for this amendment to the entertainment license is throughout this, you know, the year post COVID was still experimental because we didn't have we didn't have a lot of full shows, it was a lot of ups and downs. Now we have some really solid data, and a lot of the people, I believe the place has been accepted by by the town, I think, and certainly by the patrons that continue to come in there and and say the same thing over and over again. You brought something really incredible to the Cape. We bring in national and international touring acts as well as showcasing local and emerging talent. The at the end of the day, a lot of people, our demographic is really, you know, 40 and up, and that's a lot of the the acts that we bring in there to date, that's our that's our 50% of our demographic is people, and a lot of those are retirees down here. Almost every day, someone comes in that's retired down here, we're open year round, and they say, when are you gonna bring matinee shows? We don't want to drive at night, we don't want to go out late. And and that's really sort of the maybe the genesis of this idea to to expand. We also kind of, you know, originally submitted our hours from five to to close, and now we're realizing because it's so event driven that, you know, we want to be able to offer more to the the general public. And we're bringing people from off, being open year round where there's limited things to do down here in the off season, we're bringing people from off Cape to these shows, from Maine, all over New all over New England, and it's really been well received. We got a five star rating across all social media, people love the place. I think we're trying to really do a good job to bring something special to the town. But we by by being able to be open during the day with entertainment, which is important to us, that enables us to do charity events, you know, receptions, wedding receptions, corporate events, birthday parties, things that that people want to do, but they can't do because it often doesn't fit into our seven to 11 schedule for the entertainment license. So that's really the the sort of the where it started. Certainly, we want to we realize that we need to be open for a longer period of time to make this business more successful and expand. That's another part of it. But we're limited to what we can do, and again, the way that that's has been laid out in the what you read, light shows and all that stuff, it's really about we can't we can't have comedian a comedian in here. We had Lenny Clark there, and at night, we could have Steve Sweeney and those Boston legends. We can't have a comedy show during the day, which would be great for the summer crowd and for the off season. We can't do that without having entertainment license amended. And we can't do other things that beyond, you know, touring artists or or bands, we can't really do anything with amplification. And we certainly don't respect the people surrounding us. The water park across the street is much louder than anything coming out of our building. And we want to, again, we just want to be able to offer a lot more because what we do have during that four hour window has been very successful and well received.
What about? So I'm following you with respect to earlier events. What about the extension of the late hour, so to speak?
Extra hour?
From it's 11 now, right? For for entertainment?
It's 11 now.
And 1 a.m., I believe, is that correct for the?
Yes.
Alcohol service? So why the need to increase the hours for the entertainment from 11 P M. till 12 a.m.?
Well, that extra hour, you know, that hard stop at 11 has been a little bit difficult because it's such a short window for entertainment. And whereas the sound is fully contained in that building, you know, it would be easy. You want to speak on that?
If I may allow that to, operationally speaking, you know, we we try to run a really tight schedule there, and all the bands that come through there, when we deal with the contracts, the riders, the things that need to be in place before they even show up, deposits, whatever that is, it's clearly defined to the artist that these are our hours and you have to be done by 11. Well, many of these bands are regional or national or international acts. People pay good money to see them, and they try to give the maximum dollar amount to the fan, and invariably, we're running into situations with multiple encores that these people want to do. They clap, they go off, and one more, and then they don't want to leave. And it's like if we just had the same deal in place contractually, look, you're done by 11. And if they stretch it to the 11, 10, 11, 15 with an encore too, we don't feel like we're stepping on anybody's toes because technically, if we had 12, we will push always for 11. But this way, we have a little bit of a buffer because, like I said, it's it's tough to say you guys can't go back out. It just can't because we don't want to run into a situation with the town. I mean, we did a lot of work with the intervestibule to capture sound, the soundproofing. We've had no violations since we've been open, and we want to keep that. But, you know, it's it's something which is really a buffer zone. So it's, you know, it's just really an ask, it doesn't have to happen, but it's really an operational thing that'd make it a little bit easier, especially like loading out too, because they break down their their gear, and we have a loading ramp on the side, and they'll pull up their van and and load their gear out. When that happens, sometimes the door gets propped open, we have a guy that's usually there, so it's not allowed to stay open. Bring your gear out, put it in, we close the door. This door cannot stay open because we are respectful of the neighbors. So that buffer zone there is really all that is what we're asking for, the extra hour on that side of the equation.
Okay, is there anything else you want to say before we discuss public input?
Will we be able to address the public input?
Sure.
Okay.
Of course.
Go ahead.
Wouldn't be very fair.
Well, I don't know if we have to go for.
Push your starch out your arrows or whatever, and then said, that's it, you can't speak anymore. No, I wouldn't do that. All right. So the first thing I'm gonna do, so I don't forget, is go through the public input that we got. And Dakota, I want you to follow me so that if I miss any, you let me know. So we'll go to the ones in the packet, starting with. I guess it's Catherine Fenerlis Koofos, K O U F O S. I hope I'm pronouncing her name correctly. And it's also bottom of it, and the sign off is also by a Peter Fenerlis and a Louis Fenerlis, which who I assume are family members. But her email is that was addressed to our licensing department was dated May 30th, and it says as follows. Never approved of having the Music Room in the first place. We can hear it throughout the day and night. We are the we are at the point of selling if you continue to grant them extended time and added days. With the water park as well makes the noise level along with the Music Room 24/7 of screaming and constant noise. When is it enough? We pay taxes, we vote against it. And those three names signed off on that one. Okay, next email we got was from a Dennis in Howard. This is gonna be tough. Looks like Farquharson, F A R Q U H A R S O N, 48 Jerusha Lane.
That's Denise.
Jerusha Nice?
Denise and Howard.
Denise and Howard, you know them?
No, I just.
Okay, it's I see, all right. That was that's June 1, 2023, and it says, we are not in favor for this action. This is not conducive to the quality of life for the neighborhood. We were told that this to be a upscale meeting place with a wine bar, et cetera, small scale music entertainment. So far, this has been leaning to a full scale club. This should not be allowed so close to a residential area. So far, with the existing permit hours in place, the noise level complaints have been too many. We would appreciate a no vote on this. The next one is from Josephine Warnock, W A R N O C K. Don't see an address on, oh, yes, she says it in the body of the letter. May 31, 2023, we are abudders at 49 Anastasia Road. We are strongly against any changes in their entertainment hours. The Music Room should not abut any residential areas. There is too much noise coming from that facility at night. Sincerely, William and Josephine Warnock. Next one is a Thomas Cotter, C O T T E R. I don't, oh, yeah, there's an address mentioned in the body of the email, the email's dated June 2. My name is Thomas Cotter, and I am an owner of a home at 38 Anastasia Road. I received a notice of the request to to increase the entertainment license hours by three times the current approved hours. I received this request today, June 2, 2023. I believe that this increase will be a public nuisance and add to the current noise level in our residential neighborhood. Please consider that this noise level will be added to the noise from the water park across from the Music Room. I see no way that this change will add to the betterment of West Yarmouth and should be rejected. Patron and performer dancing, live bands, amplification system, theater shows, movies, light shows will need to be monitored and likely will require police in town officials to spend tax dollars. His request falls short of a circus. I am sure that the Music Room is not equipped to safely manage the broad scope of entertainment described in the abudders notice. The neighborhood residences have expressed a desire to form a petition to contest any changes in current status. Thank you, Thomas Cotter. Next one is April Regulinski, and it's dated June 1, 2023.
That one's for the next hearing.
Yeah. I don't have that.
Is that the next one?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, you're right, that's the next one, I'm sorry. That's the next one. So then we had one that. Dakota passed out to us, this one here, I think.
You also had on the other side of that Pachelis one.
There's there's one on the other side of that?
Yeah.
Hold on a second, let me see this one. Oh, yeah, okay. This is a Robert and Deborah Ebert, E B E R T, 43 Anastasia Road, West Yarmouth. We are writing in opposition to the notice to abudders for the amendment hearing concerning the changes in hours of operation for the Music Room located at 541 Route 28 in West Yarmouth, Mass. As residents of the abutting neighborhood, we do not want the hours extended. As warm weather approaches and we spend more time with household windows and doors open and increased time outdoors frequently at night, our neighborhood is burdened by the bass sound of, and it's in capital letters, boom, 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 until the closing hours. If the hours are extended, we will now have 12 hours Monday through Saturday and 11 hours on Sunday of having our days and nights impacted. With the inflatable water park, which is across the street from the Music Room, we hear that too, and it will be all day and all night. As retired residents, we feel this is very disruptive. At your last hearing on this matter, we were promised that we would hear nothing. That simply hasn't been the case. Your suggested course of action and solution to us was to notify the police, which is an unnecessary burden and frankly, a waste of time and resources for our police department. Additionally, we have increased concerns that the Music Room is quickly becoming a quote daytime nighttime club, close quote, increasing the risk to the community and again, disturbing our neighborhood. While this may be an attraction for some, the potential of impacting our property value is very real. While we want to see the town of Yarmouth thrive and grow, we need to put value in protecting and respecting residences residents and sense of community. Once again, we ask that you deny the request to expand hours of operation at the Music Room, and thank you for your consideration and understanding. Robert and Deborah Ebert, and they repeat their address. And then, I think there was one other one that we got, that Dakota, somebody came into the, when did they come in Dakota to the office?
It was yesterday.
Yesterday? Okay. So somebody came in and said they didn't get the notice that was mailed to them, and it seems to be. mailed to them and it seems to be some confusion on their part that it wasn't mailed to the actual property address there. And that's not how the notices are mailed. They're mailed to whomever.
Right. I turned in all the green cards.
On the assessor's records.
Right.
So I just want to make that clear for the pub, for the public to know that if you're looking for notices, that's how.
Right.
You're going to get them. You know, that's where they're going to be. But anyway, they came in and it's Joan and Ed. Looks like, is it Bougan or B-O-U-G-H-A-N? Is that how you would read it? Seventeen Hunters Green, West Yarmouth. We, as do all the neighbors, object to the above information. And this is on the, on the notice that I read into the record. They wrote this note. We, as do all the neighbors, object to the above information regarding the music room, the hours, live entertainment, amplification system, eight-piece band, et cetera, and Sundays. That's the handwritten note. Did I miss anything? No, I got everything. Okay. So now what I'm going to do is go to the public, anybody who wants to be heard, either in favor of the request on the licensing or in opposition to it. Yes. And identify yourself. And if you live in.
Good evening.
Proximity, let us know that too.
My name is Kenneth Evans and I live in Yarmouthport, right up on six A, just above the club. And I'm totally in favor of the extensions. I have lived here over twenty years. I've been on the cultural clubs, cultural centers, board, taught at the museum. I've done a number of cultural things here and have felt kind of a lack of entertainment, to be specific. It's, it's something that's necessary and useful and beneficial to communities, I feel. Plus, this particular restaurant club does bring in many, many people to the area that use other restaurants. They use other hotels. They, they benefit the community in that sense. I do understand what the people are saying and their complaints. There's no doubt about that. I feel for what they're saying, but I do also feel that many of the things that they're saying are a bit confused with the, whatever that is across the street there with the children and everything, because they're talking about this organization making noise and everything during the daytime, which they're not even allowed to be open or do any of that. They're not the ones doing it. It's this, what is the?
Waterpark.
The waterpark over there. So some of them are a bit confused about that. From what I could gather on the street addresses, one is so far away, they couldn't have possibly heard anything. And it's, it's something where, yes, there, my experience with these kinds of businesses and so on, there's almost always in the entertainment area, someone who complains. There's no doubt. Some are real, some are more concerning than others. But there's also the side of all the people who are enjoying this and the people who are asking for extra hours, both early and later. A lot of the things they want to do on the early hours, I get the, get the feeling, a good part of that could be voluntary or not a financial raising situation. Maybe the extra hour on the end would allow them financially to benefit just a little bit more to be able to afford the other things that they could do here for the town and whatnot. So I'm totally in favor of this.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, I'm Paul Nelson. I'm one of the musical directors at the music room. And I think I have a story. I'm a Connecticutite, so I get a lot of flack for being up here. And I've been up here for about four years. I, I've come to love the people here. And I've recorded the musicians here, the local talent. So I think I have a little story that addresses the area. I was mixing an album for a local artist and there was a knock on the front door. And it was an elderly woman. She walked in, she says, I live right over here. And I said, oh, great. She goes, well, I'm putting, listing my house tomorrow. And I just wanted to come in and see what this place was all about before I left. So I gave her the tour and I showed her the gallery and I showed her the studio and all this, about forty-five minutes. And then at the end, when I led her to the door, she said, you know, when I came in here, I said I was going to list my house. She goes, I've been here for years and I'm retired now. And now that I've seen this place, I'm not going to move. I've seen people walk in there in tears. I've never seen the need for entertainment. I've never seen anything like that. I've toured the world. It's, it's, it's amazing. It's nobody's fault. I mean, I hear stories about how the things used to be in the past. And you don't want to go towards that. And SNIC, there's got to be regulations so it doesn't get like that, like the Wild West. But this is not that kind of place. And this is not that kind of people. So I just want to make that known. Okay?
All right. Thank you. There's somebody behind you that wanted to be heard?
Good evening. I'm Ruben. I own the store right next to them. We share basically the same hallway, same hall. And I don't see any reason to, I mean, I feel sympathy for whoever complained, but we ourselves don't have no problem if you extend the hours or, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone, yes?
My name is Zoe McNamara. I lived on Cape Cod my entire life. I don't own a house on Cape Cod and I live in West Dennis. I don't even live in Yarmouth. But I am a musician and there has never been a place for me to truly showcase my passion and really what I live for, but for the music room. I was given the opportunity to do my first solo performance on a stage with all of the equipment that I could possibly need because of this place. And it has been the best experience of my life. And I genuinely mean that. When COVID came around and there was a good possibility that live music would never be able to see the light of day again. And, you know, I don't make my money only from music, but for the people who do, it was a really scary time. And the music room is, is able to do that for people. And, you know, not only can performers, are they able to benefit from this place, but we come together and we listen to something that makes us happy. And we can, can all become a community on a dance floor. And it might sound silly, but it means a lot to us. And specifically, it means a lot to me. Thank you.
Okay. I don't see anybody else in the public. So you had asked if you could have an opportunity to respond for the public input. This is your chance.
Say one thing first. Yeah, just to clarify. Thank you, Ruben, from Kathy's place. They, they're a wall apart from us. So literally, one wall separates Kathy's place from us, as you may or may not know. So, and they're in support of this. So, you know, this, the Anastasia Road, which is right behind it, I understand that these people don't like a park, commercial, and people parking by their house in the back. And that may be why they're complaining. I don't know. But the, the noise is not emanating from the venue. We double, triple wall those things with airspace from a professional sound engineer that worked for NBC Studios, a veteran of NBC Studios. It contains the sound. And if Kathy's place, that's one wall apart, is good with that. I don't understand why they can hear that from, anything from Anastasia Road or Jerusha Lane. I own the house on Jerusha Lane. It's a half a mile away. So I don't understand how they can do that. But I do, we do want to respect that, of course. And, you know, if any further soundproofing is necessary to do, we will do that. Go ahead, go ahead.
Well, I have the same, it appears to be six public comments here from these various people that took the time to write in. So of course, we can't be all things to all people and make everybody happy all the time. But there are some commonalities here that hopefully, when Chairman Stone read through these, you know, a bell went off, so to speak. Three of these people comment about, you know, in conjunction with the water park. Obviously, the people that live there and talk about the value of their properties. You know, I understand what they're saying and, you know, it can be disruptive. And the retirees, most of these were retired people, the noise. So a retiree typically to me is someone of an older demographic that's there, which I understand. These are exactly the same demographics of people that are asking for matinee shows. So it's a little bit of a conundrum. But the reality is, three of these six reference the water park, which has nothing to do with us. They mention, we can hear it throughout the day and night. We're here to see if we can amend our license to do some business during the day because we are currently not open during the day. So that sound doesn't emanate from us. And, you know, from a value perspective, you know, I come in from Colorado for this. I have another business there. I'm in the real estate business. I see appraisals all the time. To say that the value of the property is up or down, I mean, everyone's values are up. But when you, when you buy a property that abuts a commercial tract of land knowingly, usually it's because it's cheaper for a reason. And also you have Route twenty-eight, which is another hundred yards from their fence line, if that. And the road traffic is loud enough. And when we were even building the place, we got open, COVID hit, we couldn't be open, nobody could be open. When things finally loosened up, when we first started having shows, the water park came in, you can literally hear that bell at the water park over the volume of our show if you're in the front half of our building. It's a piercing bell-like sound. So I understand that these abutters are sensitive to sound and they probably didn't like it when the water park came in either, which preceded us. And we've done everything that we can and it's been asked of us to make sure that those walls are solid, that we don't have bleed out. We build extra vestibules, we have extra soundproofing on the doors. We try to limit how much those doors are even open during any kind of performance, except for the front. So, you know, these people also, when we opened, we sent out on our own dime to everybody around there, not just these abutters, but to people within a five-mile radius and people that own.
Three hundred yards.
Well, but the people that own properties that live up in Chelsea and they have property here or wherever, say, come on down, we want to do an open house. Let us, let us, let you see how it closes the sound. And we had very few takers on that, unfortunately. But we have been trying since day one to, we realize we're in the, you know, entertainment business. We've been trying our best to provide a product here in town that has a lot of fringe benefits for local musicians, for other people. And we have a real need to be able to be open during some, some, you know, matinee shows. And whether or not those matinees will be two days a week or three is a contractual thing from the operational side. So we don't really know. People say, you're going to be having shows five days a week at noon. Probably not. Because it's a contractual thing. These things are done five, six, seven months out when performers say, I'm coming through. I'd like to do a comedy show. Can you, can you take me? And well, we can't do that yet, but we're going to go before the board and see if we can amend this. So that's why we're here. It's certainly not to be disruptive to anybody else. But we, you know, we just feel that some of these complaints are kind of getting lumped in with a sensitivity to the water park, which is really not why we're here. So, thank you.
All right. I'm going to go to the board now. Peter, do you have any questions or comments?
It's my, it's my understanding that the music room has not been open during the day, correct?
Correct.
So any of the noise coming from the music room couldn't come from the music room? So I, I think there's a, thank you for clarifying that, that one point. Going to midnight, I can understand the argument, but if there is some noise and some noise of, you know, the bands breaking down and stuff at night, you know, maybe still leaving, leaving the end date at eleven o'clock is not a bad idea. It sounds to me like it would be nice to be able to have matinee shows and, you know, a little earlier in the day, especially, especially as you're open year-round. And another question, Dakota, have we received any noise complaints since, since the music room opened roughly a year ago? Because I know there were some, there were some issues early on that, that they, that they addressed to, to quiet, to quiet the noise coming out of the building, building. Have we had any, any complaints from, from the police or anything like that? And any notices?
So since the last showcase hearing back in twenty-twenty-one, Sergeant Hennessy did say there were two noise complaints through the police department. One, they already addressed was the parking law issue. And I believe the other one was just a noise complaint. Nothing had followed through on that action, though.
Okay. I have, I have no further questions right now.
Thank you, Peter. Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, you know, in looking at the application and looking at all the entertainment, what strikes me is just the volume of the entertainers that are interested in performing in a location like this. That's the thing that has really struck me as quite unique, is the fact that there's a huge amount of interest in performing in this venue.
Yeah. Well, that's interesting to us, but that was part of the original plan, was to build a listening room, you know, that is, you know, one of the best in New England. And we've gotten international acts. Some of my heroes as a kid, growing up, listening to some of these people that have played there, they've come up after the show saying, this is one of the greatest rooms this size we've ever played, greatest sounding rooms. I'm sorry. So, yeah, it is a special place. We built it into a special place. And, yeah. And a couple of other things that I wanted to add into, I don't know if I mentioned this before, there's other things that require an entertainment license, again, during the day part, other things that we want to do beyond the corporate events and the receptions and things of that nature. There's also, we've got a relationship with another recording studio down in Norwalk, Connecticut called The Factory Underground. They're about a twenty thousand square foot school, really. It's a, it's a technical school with a recording studio. They do video and live engineering. And they recently, or they spent five or six years trying to get college accreditation. And now they have that for certain things. And they don't offer national or international touring acts. So live sound, so they, and they want us to be a satellite for them and us to be able to offer out those accreditations by teaming up with them. It's another thing that requires having entertainment during the day. To be able to offer college accreditation in the town of Yarmouth through the music room, I think would be a good thing for the community as well.
I see a gentleman is interested in responding to that as well. Go ahead, sir.
Paul Nelson, yeah, what Brian's talking about is an actual school.
Right.
So they would train doing sound with our acts, learning engineering in our studios. But that requires music being played. And you can't have engineers and like that doing sound during a, just.
Understand.
Have a different time. There's no space. That's a very important component of this.
I understand. Thanks for clarifying that.
In addition to that.
I just want to point out one thing, that in, in the public notice and the notice that was published that you went, you sent out, your request doesn't include weddings and some other things that you're talking about.
It didn't?
It's limited to dancing by patrons, dancing by entertainers, recorded music, live music, live band update pieces, amplification system, theater shows, movies, light shows and public shows. So we can't go beyond the scope of that. That's what's advertised.
Well, I.
When we say weddings.
Listen to me. I'm talking. So when I talk, that means you don't talk. You understand that?
Yes.
Okay. So what, what that means is that the public hasn't had a chance to weigh in on anything other than what's in this notice. So we're not going to start adding things because that's, that's not the way to do it. It's not procedurally correct. I just want to bring that point up.
No, I appreciate that. Because now would, would comedy club fit within the?
Theater shows.
Theater shows? Does that fit within the?
Probably. That'd be okay.
So if they wanted to do some of the other things that have been mentioned, that would have to be a future amendment to the license and subject to the future review.
Yeah. I'm not saying I would necessarily object.
I understand.
Or have a feeling one way or another as to those. Or have a feeling one way or another as to those other events. I'm saying they, they weren't noticed to the people. So somebody could have objections, maybe not to this, but to some of the other things you're talking about, and they didn't get an opportunity to be advised that that would be discussed or considered by the board. That's my point.
Yeah, well, I'm, I'm appreciative of the fact that, you know, we did ask about other noise complaints, and I think it's fair to say that there really haven't been any. And I do know that when we first brought this up, there was a lot of talk about noise and sound, and they have done everything that we've asked them to do with respect to noise abatement. So, as far as I'm concerned, obviously, what you have is an enterprise that's becoming more successful. There's more demand for the use of it, there are more opportunities to make it more successful. And so I think that's, that's a huge plus. And like I said in reviewing all the, on all the, all the performers that are interested in coming here, I just, it's, it's amazing to see the, the level of interest. It's very, very high. I'm very sympathetic to this, but I, on the other hand, for some reason, on Sundays, going into that late hour, although we're talking, and this is a year-round activity as well, right? So... Again, I'm, I'm very, very sympathetic to what you're trying to do, very, very supportive. I'm also interested in hearing what some of the other board members have to say as well.
Thank you, Mark. Dan.
Thanks for your presentation. Peter asked one of my questions, no noise complaints of any real volume, so that's good. I'm curious, the parking lot seems to be creating some of the issues. Is there any fencing around the parking lot?
There is fencing around the entire parking lot.
And what kind of fencing is it?
Stockade.
Stockade, okay. Candidly, I've heard nothing but positive remarks about the music room, and I think you'd be commended for that.
Thank you.
It's brought a level of entertainment that the Cape hasn't had before, so we're very appreciative to have you in town.
Thank you.
Obviously, it's concerning when we see some of the comments from local neighbors. I encourage you to continue working with them and trying to come to some accommodation and making every effort you can to mitigate the noise. As far as your request goes, I have no issues whatsoever with the expansion into the afternoon. I want to wait and see on the 12:00 PM piece. I think moving it into the early day is, is fine, it makes a lot of sense for a lot of reasons, but because of the proximity to the neighbors, I'm concerned about going to the midnight hours. That's kind of where I'm at presently, but thank you for the information, thank you for the work.
Thank you.
Dorcas.
My concern, I have no problem whatsoever with during the day. My concern also is going till midnight. What if there was like a compromise of 11:30? You know, it would, it looked like you were saying more like you needed it until like about quarter past 11:00.
It was more of an ask because the best that we can do is, is try to, you know, tell these performers, "We have a hard stop at 11:00. So if you plan on doing an encore, wrap it up by 10:40, 10:45, come back out." A lot of these people literally are rock stars, and they, they don't always try to play by the rules, and you've got someone that paid $150 for a seat right down front, and they're like, "Come out," and they usually sign autographs and do that, and we do our best, and we just thought, "Well, maybe if we keep our contracts the same with the band." So we have to engage a contract when it goes to them before it even show up. These are our rules, this is what we provide, sound system, hours of operation, et cetera. Then if we kind of had a buffer zone that we don't necessarily tell them about, we just know, look, okay, if we, if it runs a little long, we're not going to get in trouble. That was the reason for the ask. Again, it's really, you know, at your mercy, kind of an ask. It doesn't really influence my business model, because the business is fairly done by then. So, I did want to just ask for one thing on clarity. When Chairman Stone brought up adding all these other tertiary things to what this is, this is part of my, you know, my concern, is that the wording is somewhat generic in these things. So when this says dancing by patrons, and it says live entertainment, live music, live band, in theory, I don't know if, or do I need to go get a license to have a wedding reception? If someone says, "Look, we want to hire a band to use your stage, and we want the people to come in and party in the afternoon and whatever, can we rent your facility?" So maybe billed to us as a wedding reception, but I don't know if we require, this is why we want to say, "Well, we can't do that, because we're not allowed to have any kind of live music during the day, okay? Can't have any dancing during the day because our entertainment license says no." So for something like that, that's the clarity issue that I, because I don't want to step on someone's shoulders and say, "Yeah, I can do a wedding reception," only to find out I cannot. So that's, that's what I want to answer.
Personal opinion is that is not covered by the request or the, and more importantly, by the publication.
Sure. Okay, fair enough.
I mean, we get wedding requests, for, for example, Taylor Bray Farm, and they're very, very specific.
Sure.
We want to do a wedding, we got a tent, we got a caterer.
This is a little more unusual, because it's contained in the building, and if someone says, "I want to bring a band in, and we love these guys," I'm like, "Okay," but that's why, what would our process be, just to go back through and add that to this list here?
Would probably require another hearing.
Okay.
And, and public notice.
Sure.
I'm going to tell you how I feel about this, and then we're going to close the public portion of the hearing and deliberate. I'm in accord with Dan. I feel exactly the same as he does. I think it would be, wouldn't be a problem in my mind to have earlier hours for matinees and things like that, and to accommodate people that have a problem driving, but I really do think 11:00 PM, especially in a, where you're abutted by a residential neighborhood, is late enough. And there's, and you and I both know that 11:00 gets you something else, because there's a breakdown process and, and things like that that can create noise. So I am not willing to extend, to vote in favor of extending the closing hour for the entertainment till midnight. I will hold that to 11:00, but I would be in favor of the rest of the request. So, do I have a motion to close the public portion of the hearing?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Do a roll call vote. Dan?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Dorcas?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
I vote aye as well. Dan, do you want to make a motion?
I want to make sure I get the right times. So what are, what are we looking for, 12:00 PM in the afternoon?
Yes, noon.
And 1:00 PM on Sundays?
Excuse me, they, the current hours were 7:00 PM to 11:00 PM, and it says they want approval to be changed to 12:00 PM to 12:00 AM, and you and I both have indicated that we're more in favor of a 12:00 PM to 11:00, 11:00 PM.
Yep. Okay, so, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the expansion of the entertainment license on Monday through Saturday from 7:00 PM to 11:00 PM, and, oh, actually, I'm sorry, 12:00 PM to 11:00 PM, and on Sundays from 1:00 PM to 11:00 PM.
Can I get your hours again, please?
Monday through Saturday from 12:00 PM to 11:00 PM.
Okay.
And then...
What, Sunday?
Sunday is 1:00 PM to 11:00 PM.
1:00 PM to 11:00? Okay. Do I have a second on that motion? I'll second it. So we have a motion and a second. Does anybody want to discuss this before it goes to a vote? Mark, you want to say anything further?
I'm, I'm comfortable with going to midnight on Fridays and Saturdays and leaving the rest...
That'd be fantastic.
11:00 PM, but at least a couple of nights...
That would be fantastic.
That would, that you could go to. I think, I'm generally in favor of what's been said, but I think at least there should be a couple of nights, Friday and Saturday night, that's typically a night that most people accept as going out, but I think the rest, I would stick at the 11:00 PM. So, I'm almost there to support the motion.
Any additional thoughts, Peter?
I, I, I agree with Mark for Friday night and Saturday night to, to midnight, and the rest of the week till 11:00, 11:00 PM.
Dorcas?
I'd go along with that as well. I'd be happy with that.
Dan, what do you think?
I'm happy with what I've already said, so I'm happy to withdraw the motion. Seems like we have a majority going the other way.
All right, I'll withdraw the second. You can withdraw the motion, all right? Mark, do you want to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the changes in the entertainment license. And the hours that I recommend that we approve would be for Sunday from 1:00 PM to 11:00 PM, Monday from 12:00 PM to 11:00 PM, through, all the way through Thursday. And then on Friday and Saturday, 12:00 PM to midnight.
Fantastic.
Okay?
Thank you.
That's my motion.
I'd second that.
Okay.
Okay. So this is essentially the same motion as Dan's, except what you're doing is you're extending the Friday and Saturday entertainment licenses through midnight.
Yes.
Correct. Okay, and we have a second by Dorcas. Let's take a roll call vote on that. Peter?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Dan?
Nay.
You're voting nay? I thought you were willing to compromise. Okay. Dorcas? Dan, I'll support your nay. I'll vote nay, too. So it's a three-to-two vote in favor.
And can I just say, gentlemen, that I'm not totally against the idea, I'm just, I'm a guy that takes steps, and we're asking the neighbors to do a lot here, so, but I like what I see so far.
Thank you.
I would just comment while we're waiting that I have sent family members down to the music room, my younger generation of family members, who have been very pleased with, with the music room, the venue, the staff, everything. They thought it was just a great experience.
Thank you.
Want to mention that?
Okay, our various licensing administrator has brought to my attention, we don't have anything before us to amend the alcohol license tonight, and that is from 5:00 PM to 1:00 AM. So even though we acted on the entertainment portion of it, does not change the alcohol service. So if you're going to try to do something to change the alcohol service, you're going to have to come back, give public notice and so forth. I don't know if that's in your, in your plans or not, but I just want to make you aware of that.
It is, and, yeah, yeah, it's...
Thank you, Dakota. Appreciate that. All right, I guess we're done. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Where's my agenda? What did I do with it?
Here it is. Oh, no, sorry, that isn't it.
I usually have checkmarks on it that I go through. That's why, I just get all this stuff. Here it is. Okay, the next licensing hearing. New alcohol entertainment and, it says automatic amusement license, but I understand that's going to be cut out, and we'll talk about that in a minute. Porticelli's Pizzeria and More LLC, doing business as DC Porticelli's Pizzeria and More, 731 Route 28, South Yarmouth, Mass. So you want to identify yourself for the record?
Absolutely, Mr. Stone. How are you today?
Good.
Mr. Chairman, members of the select board. David Lawler on behalf of the applicant, and I have with me Eleanor Kelleher and Candace Cook, the proprietors, and Eleanor will be seeking to be the manager of record under the liquor license, and I'll go over her experience and qualifications in a, in a few minutes.
Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll start by reading the notice into the record, and then you can proceed at that point. Let me see, which one is this? Here it is. Board of Selectmen, acting as a local licensing authority for the town of Yarmouth, has received an application for a new annual all-alcohol restaurant license from DC Porticelli's Pizzeria and More LLC, doing business as DC Porticelli's Pizzeria and More, 731 Route 28, South Yarmouth, Mass. Eleanor Kelleher, manager, a weekday entertainment application, has also been filed. Live entertainment will be held Fridays from 7:00 PM to 10:00 PM, and Saturdays from 8:00 PM to 10:00 PM. Live entertainment is to include a live band with up to four pieces with amplification. Recorded music below conversation level will be held Monday through Sunday. The hearing will be held on Tuesday, June 6, 2023, at Town Hall, 1146 Route 28, South Yarmouth, Mass. The Selectmen's meeting begins at 6:00 PM. Written comments will be accepted until 4:30 PM Friday, June 2, 2023, at the Licensing Department at Town Hall, or can be submitted electronically to publiccomment@yarmouth.ma.us. Verbal comments will be accepted at the hearing. Okay, Tony Lawler, you're on.
With respect to this application, this is a former pizza place, and it's being, that basically didn't survive COVID, in my understanding, and my clients are seeking to run a pizza family restaurant. And I know, and I'll, I'll address the entertainment in a minute, and Eleanor Kelleher, you have her resume, her CV, and she clearly has the experience in having operated and run a catering business and also a prior restaurant, has served alcohol in her experience, is tip-trained, is likewise, I believe, served safe or some other company similar to that. All the documents are in place. Ms. Cook also will be working there and is a little new to the business, but clearly, Ms. Keller has the experience to operate such a business. There is a little bit of an entertainment request in the evenings. It's still a family restaurant, they're very early hours, and part of that is some family members playing a band, and they want to occasionally pop in and, and kind of provide entertainment, an extended family. I'm not saying it's just going to be extended family.
Do we have dessert? Yeah?
That's norm.
I think he needs to mute himself. I hope he has dessert for everybody, if he's going to have it.
I'll be an eager customer.
Yeah. So, so, you know, with respect to that, the hours or operations, you know, are, as indicated, it's a family, you know, it's in that section of 28 that has a lot of tourists or visitors, which, whatever you call them. We, I do want to say for the record, they're open, not, no alcohol is being served. They're open serving pizza, hoping to get by, and I've heard some great things already about it, and we hope that everybody in the town of Yarmouth, if, if we're lucky to come, be approved, will come by for, you know, some food and a beverage, and I'm going to cut it at that. I can go on and on, as you know, Dan, but...
You're an attorney.
Exactly.
Hey, watch it, watch out now, watch out.
That's right.
Did, did you work in this business years ago? Because I was looking at the dates, and, and I thought that Eleanor worked there like through 2003 or something like that? At this same business? No? Am I incorrect on that? Okay.
I have my own, it was a pizzeria in Mashpee.
Is that where it was? Okay. I didn't, I didn't see... I didn't, I didn't see, we normally see with new requests for licenses, a checklist with Sergeant Hennessy. Did you get anything like that, Dakota?
Yes.
Oh, you did? It's not, it's just not in the packet?
It's not in the packet, yes.
Okay, so you met with Sergeant Hennessy, and he went through all the alcohol things with you? Okay, good.
And I went over, you know, and we'll continue. I mean, it's obviously they.
Do you know them?
Huh?
But do you know them?
A little bit. I'm their lawyer, but I, I'm not, I'm not hanging out with them. I'm not gonna lie to them.
I'm just kidding, I'm just kidding.
But, you know, the importance of, and I will go over in greater detail, you know, the importance especially of underage drinking, being able to identify a person who should not be served, all those things, you know, have been, you know, through the courses and will be addressed in my initial meeting. Always when I deal with a liquor license, I talk about the importance of that. The importance of maintaining, you know, reputation and, you know, and, you know, really to be vigilant at all times. Because if you let something slip through the cracks, that's the time something's gonna happen. And you really just gotta maintain, you know, a solid policy and enforce it all the time. And I go that, anytime I have a client with a liquor license, I go through that with them.
That's good, okay. Is anybody in the, do we get any public comment on this?
He received one.
Is it in the packet?
Yes.
Okay. I looked at these on the screen, but I didn't have them on hard copy before I came here today.
She's in the Music Room package.
Which one was it?
Well, it's one, but this is the one that Dakota is referring to.
Oh, yeah, I, it's familiar once I see it, but I just, I'm just figuring out where it was and why it, where it's hiding in my packet. Here, here, okay, got it. Thank you, Dorcas. Yeah, we did get, we did get one letter in opposition from an April Regonlinski, I guess it is. R-E-G-O-N-L-I-N-S-K-I, who says that she's in a butter. I don't see a specific address beyond that, but she says she's in a butter to the business and has concerns about the application for both the liquor and the, and live entertainment. She says that her family owns a house that abuts the property for almost 60 years, and we want to maintain peace and quiet in the neighborhood. We are specifically concerned about the live entertainment that is to include a live band with up to four pieces with amplification. We do not want to be hearing noise in our backyard or throughout our house. In the past, we've had to call the police because of excessive noise, E.G. music with a booming bass and intoxicated people screaming coming from the area where Porticelli's Pizzeria is now located. But again, you don't even have an alcohol license at this point. I'm a lawyer. Another one. And need to be able to read documents, even on Friday and Saturday nights without music playing for hours, disturbing my thought process every week. Porticelli's looks like it has some outdoor space, like a patio, and the music and noise from people would be even more disturbing if it is a live band with amplification outside or played with the establishment's windows or doors open. No one wants to hear music every week in their house slash backyard, and that is not of their choosing and interferes with their ability to quietly enjoy their property. If Porticelli's is just a pizza restaurant and that, that wants to be able to serve beer to go with the pizza, why do they need to utilize live bands with amplification in a way that negatively impacts their neighbors? Thank you for considering my family's comments in connection with the Porticelli's application, April Regonlinski. That was the only letter that we got of any written communications.
That was her email that went with it.
Oh, yeah, and then she, I did see that. That was an email saying she couldn't be here tonight, and so we're reading the letter. Is there anybody that wants, else that wants to be heard? Yes.
Hi, Tom Murphy, President of the Yarmouth Restaurant Association. This is a young couple who is opening up a restaurant that last year was not open. It is in an area that is heavily commercial. You've got miniature golf across the street, you've got a marina, you've got a restaurant, you, it's all commercial. I have no idea where this property, who says they are abutting it, could be.
No, I think there's an apartment complex on Neptune Lane, but that's the only residential property I could see on Google.
And I know that that is not coming from there. The landlord of this property owns the annex, so I know it's not coming from there. So I have no idea where it's coming from, and I think it's the obligation of the town of Yarmouth for a restaurant that was closed to give these people all the opportunity there is to be successful.
Well, the noise wasn't coming from them, because they, they weren't in business.
I don't know where this person's coming from. I've been around the town for a long time, and a lot of residents like to be heard. They don't understand they bought property next to commercial property. They gotta live with that. But I think it's the obligation to the town and to the people who, other people who live in the town, to have this place open and be successful. And you should be able, you should be giving them all the opportunities possible to let them be successful. Now, if they step over the bounds, then I know that the police department and you folks will come down on them. But you still, I'm saying, you've gotta give them a chance to make a go of it. In this world, what they're trying to do is not easy. So give them, give them the opportunity to succeed, and hopefully everyone's gonna be happy.
All right, thank you, Tom. Anyone else? Somebody has got a hand up, I think. Is that a hand?
That is hand up all meeting.
Oh, is it? Okay, so that's a kind of a paralysis thing?
Yeah.
As opposed to raising his hand? All right. So we have no other public comment?
Come on.
Norm, did you have anything?
Yeah, you know, I had my hand raised on the last hearing. It wasn't recognized. You know, you know, so.
I'm sorry about that. I would not deliberately ignore you, Norm. Not, not, I just wouldn't even think about it. Sorry. What would you like to say now that we?
Well, now it's with regard to both applications. You know, I think the sensitivity of issues with regard to where commercial and residential need are some of the most difficult issues that a select board has to address.
Yeah, I agree.
And it's important to give significant weight to public comments. That's what hearings are all about. And if, if residents are stating that they're being inconvenienced in substantial ways by commercial activity, then why doesn't the commercial business put up a, something that senses what the sound levels are right on the border of the property? So that that can be recorded? And why doesn't the town ask them to do that as part of, part of the condition for granting longer hours and, and other activities on the property? It's only fair to the residents that the town respect their, their views and give them credibility. And it, it should be a responsibility of the commercial businesses to document whether any infractions have been, have been, are occurring. It shouldn't be up to the resident to constantly call the police and then to have the police report that to the town. You know, and it's, it's only an issue with regard to situations where the commercial businesses and the residential areas abut. And it's in those situations where I think the board needs to take responsibility in requiring the businesses to do a little something extra to show that they have not created a real nuisance for the neighborhoods. Quality of life in the neighborhoods is really important.
Okay, Norm, appreciate your input and sorry about not recognizing you before. I'll be keeping an eagle eye peeled out for you going forward. Anyone else on public comment? Okay, do you want to respond to the public comment letter before I close the public portion of the hearing?
I mean, I would generally, but Mr. Murphy is more articulate than I am, and I think really spelled it out with the amount of commercial use on 28. And yourself, Mr. Chairman, pointing out the fact that how could this noise have occurred when, with people being drunk when there's not alcohol being served? And we've only been open for a very short period of time. So I, I would never question the integrity of the, the letter writer, but, you know, with so much activity, maybe she or he is confusing the noise from a different location. That's my, that's, that's my only logical conclusion based upon what's been presented.
All right, thank you. Do I have a, a motion to close the public portion of the hearing?
So moved. Second.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to close the public portion of the hearing. Roll call vote. Peter?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Dorcas?
Aye.
I vote aye as well.
Now we go to... Let me go back to the actual. So the entertainment is 7:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. Any with up to four pieces. Anybody have a problem with that? That's gonna be just Fridays and Saturday?
Yes. I actually think, was it eight on Saturday, I think?
It said seven to 10 on Friday and eight to 10 on Saturday. Do you want that seven to 10 on Saturday?
Seven would be actually better, if that's okay.
All right, so if we go seven to 10 both days, seven to 10 Friday and Saturday. Let's take them separately, just for the record. Does somebody want to make a motion on the entertainment license for 7:00 to 10:00 p.m. on both Fridays and Saturday nights?
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Do you have a second?
To approve.
Second.
Okay, any discussion on the motion?
Earlier, there was a comment about an outdoor seating space. There's no amplification of that music going outside. Right, okay.
That's strictly inside.
All right, that's all.
And after the meeting, I think they were here for the prior meeting, and they understand. Like, if they don't, they clearly do now, the importance of making sure.
Yeah, I actually think in the absence of an outdoor license, entertainment license, as part of our local rules and regulations, I believe it states that all entertain, noise from music or other entertainment has to be contained within the building, meaning no doors open, no windows open, no sound emanating from the building. Now, if somebody gets an outdoor entertainment license, which a few businesses have, that's, that's different. So the understanding clearly is this is for indoor entertainment.
Absolutely, without question.
And that's part of our, that's part of what we're gonna be voting on in our motion.
Clearly, there's no.
All right, so.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I just want to thank the applicants for coming to Yarmouth, setting up business. I've driven by it several times. It's, it's gonna look great. And I know sometimes it feels like you're going through a harassment process, but the reality is, is as a town, we really want our business district to thrive. It's shrinking. We know we need to do more, and I just want you to know that we appreciate your interest in Yarmouth, investing in this property and setting up business here. I hope you have all the success in the world. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. So we'll go to a roll call vote on the entertainment. Peter?
I vote aye.
Dorcas?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
I vote aye as well.
So that is passes unanimously, and we go to the alcohol license. Somebody want to make a motion on that?
I move as, as submitted.
Okay. We have a motion, and we have a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll go to a roll call vote. Dorcas?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
I vote aye as well. That passes unanimously. You're all set on both.
Come on down and enjoy some pizza.
We will. Thank you.
Congratulations and good luck.
All right, so we got all our licensing matters done. And Dakota, thank you very much. I also wanted to commend Dakota. She's doing a great job on the licensing and trying to space things out so that we accommodate all the requests and, but we don't get any one meeting overloaded with licensing issues.
And I will say, my office is, and I, she's great to work with.
She is.
She is great.
Thank you, Dakota.
Thank you, Dakota.
Thank you.
Okay, now we got some more legal beagle stuff. The next item is our 745 item. We're gonna hear from our newly elected District Attorney, Rob Gallis. Rob has, prior to the election, served as an Assistant District Attorney in Barnstable. Then he went into private practice and then was recently, in the November election, elected as the first Democratic District Attorney since the Mayflower, I think. I can't remember. I, I only go back, I mean, Mike O'Keefe was Republican, and then before him was Phil.
The Rollins, yes.
Rollins. I only go back to Rollins, but I, that office has been dominated by Republican candidates. So congratulations on your election.
Sure.
I know you probably don't remember, but we had a few cases when you were an Assistant District Attorney. I remember one in particular where I had somebody that came in on a jaywalking case, and you and I had a conference, and I got it reduced to first degree murder.
Well, I was trying to build a resume for this particular run, so, that's funny. Well, Mr. Chairman and members, thank you so much for allowing me to come in and talk for a few minutes about our office. I just wanted to provide an update. We've officially been in office now five months and three days. So I just wanted to share with you what we've been doing. On January 4th, when I took the oath, my first order of business was to swear in Jessica Lumba as my First Assistant District Attorney. As some of you may not be familiar with the, how the office is organized, but the First Assistant District Attorney is the top prosecutor in the office, essentially runs the office and is in charge of all the cases. We handle roughly 12,000 cases on an annual basis between our five district courts, our three Superior Courts, and our juvenile courts, and Jess is in charge of all of those cases. One of her first orders of business is that she created a vertical prosecution. What that is, is over at the Barnstable District Court, to which the town of Yarmouth goes to, when a case comes in, the prosecutor sign an arraignment, follows that case all throughout the proceedings, the pre-trials, motions, dispositions, and the trial of the case. As you might imagine, a system like that, victims benefit because they know from the very beginning who their prosecutor is going to be. And Jess is the one that set up that vertical prosecution. Also, under Jess's leadership, she created an unsolved homicide unit. When I took office, I had nine unsolved homicides across the Cape and the Islands. The very first week, we had detectives from the state police and a local police department come in to meet with us regarding a case that was 12 years old, I believe, dating back to 2011. And within the first two months, our office charged two individuals with first degree murder regarding that 12-year-old case. And I can indicate to you that our homicide units, we have, our teams, we have two of them, continuing to actively work the remaining eight cases that we have at the moment. When I, after the election night and before being sworn in in January, commonly referred to as the transition period, I undertook a little bit of a task. I wanted to meet with each of the police chiefs in my district. I have 22 of them. And I was able to do that. It spilled over a little bit past the swearing-in, but I got to meet with them in their offices, including certainly Chief Lennon. And during the conversation, we spoke mostly about what did you like about the prior administration that you would like our office to continue? And what's something that you might like to see to be done a little bit differently? And I spent about an hour in his office that particular morning, and I greatly appreciate the time that he gave me, and it was quite productive. We have also started a new department, a grant-writing department in the office. The focus right now for the grant writers, full-time employee, is two areas, human trafficking and, of course, the opioid epidemic. And we are starting to make some traction and getting some grant applications worked on there. We have also created another first in the office, DEI Committee. It's chaired by Angelé Scott Price. She is on the Select Board in Falmouth. She's the Vice Chair for the Select Board in Falmouth. A couple other more high-profile members, if you will. Tara Vargas Wallace, who is the founder and CEO of Amplify POC, is on our committee, as well as Jean Morrison, who is the President of the League of Women Voters for Cape Cod. We have about eight other people that have an interest in joining the committee. We are going to be hosting an organizational meeting the end of this month. And I'd like to take this time, if I could, to invite anyone in the town of Yarmouth who would be interested in joining our committee to contact my office so we can get the information to them when the organizational meeting is going to take place. A couple more points. I know you have a busy agenda tonight. We are now collecting data in the office. This is also a first. We are collecting such information as gender, race, ethnicity, charges, what's the bail status of the person being held or not. We had to train staff to collect this data. We went through that training in April. And we began actual collection, if you will, starting May 1st. We just produced those numbers for the month of May recently, and we're kind of going over some things now, trying to do certain tweaks where we need to do certain tweaks. And we will be looking at it again after the month of June. The hope is to be able to at least produce something in this first year from July 1st to December 31st, so that'd be six-month representation, and put it together in an annual report. That is also something that's new. The office has not previously produced an annual report. This annual report is not simply going to be for internal purposes, but we'll be sharing it with the public so we can listen to your comments and concerns and make whatever adjustments the public thinks our office should make. I want to conclude with this, if I could be allowed.
Take all the time you want.
The, I would offer that the single most significant platform issue in the year me leading up to this job was discussions involving the mental health court, or a mental health court. And what a mental health court session is, it's a specialty session in the district court where professionals in the field come right into the courtroom and work with the struggling defendant before the judge. And those professionals in the field, the clinicians, try to identify what it is that this individual is struggling with or grappling with. And as we all know, if you can make that identification, then you can try to treat that particular issue. And if you have that ability to treat the issue, you then, of course, have the ability to reduce recidivism, making us all safer and increasing public safety. When I took office, these mental health court sessions existed all across the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, except the Cape and the Islands. Judge John Julian, who's the presiding judge in Barnstable District Court, announced about three weeks ago at a recovery court graduation, that's, we used to be known as Drug Court, but a recovery court graduation. He formally announced that we will, in fact, be getting a mental health court session, one so far as to indicate who the judge is going to be. So I have reason to believe that this is going to be off the ground by the end of the summer. And I am elated, quite honestly, about that opening happening within the first year of my first term. And I can't stress enough how many folks wrapped their arms around this particular issue during the course of my campaign. So I wanted to become, come in here tonight and articulate that so folks could hear that it's coming. Now, it's going to be in Barnstable District Court, in Barnstable Court, Barnstable District Court traditionally serves Barnstable, Yarmouth, and Sandwich. However, all the other Cape towns that go to the, what we call the outer courts, Orleans and Falmouth, we will be able to transfer those cases to Barnstable on an as-needed basis, of course. So it's quite an update that I want...
All the mental health cases will be consolidated to that court?
To Barnstable, yes, for the time being.
Makes sense.
It does. So with your permission, if I come back in about another six months and give you another update, hopefully tell you about the successes of the mental health court to date, hopefully at that point, and some other things that we're certainly working on in the office.
We would love to have you back anytime. And you know, with Mark being, having been elected to the County Commissioner, as a County Commissioner, we're starting to get issues brought before us and get an understanding of issues that aren't just strictly local, but impact on us because they're county issues.
Yes.
And I think, you know, that's what you're talking about. You know, you're a county official, but a lot of what you're doing, a lot of the initiatives that you're taking, a lot of the issues that you're addressing certainly impact us here in Yarmouth in terms of our population. So we're naturally very interested in being updated and being involved in that.
Appreciate that.
I want to, if you have a couple of minutes, ask the board if they have questions or comments. But one thing I wanted to ask you, we, did some, I think somebody probably reached out to you for our alcohol awareness seminars that we run in June.
Okay.
I think it's going to be on June 26th.
Okay.
So we normally, we hire this individual who educates servers of alcohol, how to avoid, how to detect fake IDs, how to avoid service of minors, service to minors, how to detect symptoms of intoxication, what to do, et cetera. And in the past, somebody has come down from the DA's office, one of the Assistant ADAs.
Okay.
I specifically remember Michael G. came down one year. And they talked just very briefly about the criminal aspects of service of alcohol to minors or intoxicated people, things like that. The main guy is a guy named Mike Mercantonio. This is what he does for a living. He goes and gives these seminars on the IDs and all this.
Okay.
And then usually Phil Magnuson, who was a police officer and an attorney.
Yes, I know Phil.
Will speak about some of our local rules and regulations on alcohol. I generally speak as a licensing chair.
Okay.
You know, to, and it's a very good program, and I think we've gotten great results out of it. We have a lot less incidence of alcohol violations. We don't play gotcha here. We believe the educational approach is the way to go, working with the businesses, providing these kinds of educational formats. So I was told, but I could be wrong, that somebody was going to reach your office about, I think it's on July 26th. It's the last, June, I'm sorry, June 26th. I think it's the last Monday before the holiday season starts.
Okay.
And if you haven't, if nobody has reached your office, I'd love it if you could send somebody down
We will have someone there.
To continue that tradition.
Right.
It's a great program. It goes a couple hours, but the ADA wouldn't have to stay, you know. We could accommodate his schedule. He'd get up there, he'd talk 10 to 15 minutes, and he'd be back to work.
Okay, I will absolutely have someone there. It may very well not be Mike G. I elevated him to the Superior Court. So we've been pretty busy in Superior Court, but I will have someone there.
The only reason I mentioned Michael is because, I mean, I go way back with him. I coached his kid in soccer when he was like an under eight. It was like about seven. I'm serious. And so that's why I would recognize him immediately when he came.
I recognize his skills, that's why I gave him...
But whoever, you know, whoever it was, anybody, there's various ADAs have come down, and I just think it's a good presence. We'll have our police chief there, probably. I'll be there. I don't know if Phil can make it or not, but Phil Magnuson will be there if he can. It's a great program.
Okay, we'll cover it for certain.
And I think it's really consistent with your philosophies.
Excellent.
So having said that, do we have any comments or questions that, for our District Attorney? Peter.
District Attorney, really glad that you've come down to see us. This is, this is great. And I'm looking forward to you being a very successful District Attorney for all of us and for all our public safety.
Thank you very much, sir. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Mark?
Yeah, thank you. It's great to see you tonight.
Very good to see you, sir.
And I want to commend you for hitting the ground running. And every time I see you, you're like a blur. From the islands, from one end of the Cape to the other. No, I think what's great is, is for our community to have access to you and to be able to see you and engage you. You literally have been everywhere, and it's quite impressive, so.
Very much appreciate that. Nantucket tomorrow night.
Yeah, I know you've got a full schedule. I also, I'm interested in knowing if there's anything that we can do as a board to assist you or to... I know you're trying to get more funding out of the legislature because apparently our office, the District Attorney's office, has been underfunded for many years. So, and I think this is, I'd like you to talk about it because I know you feel very strongly about this, and you want to make sure that we're able to provide full representation and full services to
Right.
Every part of our community.
Thank you for opening the door on this. I do feel very strongly about it, and just to kind of catch the board up real fast. When I took office, and I do point the finger at myself a little bit because I did not pick up on this in the campaign, and I should have. But there's another DA's office out in North Hampton, Massachusetts, called the Northwest District. They have two counties. Their district population essentially mirrors ours, 260,000 people on an annual basis. Of course, our summer numbers are swell sillily, but what I learned was, my budget is $5.5 million on an annual basis, or fiscal '23. Their budget was $8.5 million, and we have the same-sized population. So then we turn to caseload, and we have a higher caseload than that particular district as well. Now, I certainly don't fault the DA out there at all, but we're not talking, you know, a 5% to 10% difference. That's 60% more of my budget. And I then looked at the annual report that he produces, and I get to see all the services that they provide out there for their people. And I just want to be able to offer that to our communities as well. So we did begin working on trying to elevate our numbers. I do want to recognize and applaud the efforts of our Cape delegation, both on the state rep side and the state senate side. Democrats and Republicans, they all came together. We had a meeting in our conference room. Many members, if not all, actually said they'd never been there before. And it was a productive meeting. So we're trying to carve a path to increase our budget honestly quite considerably. As we sit here right now, we do have hope of a little bit of a bump up. Candidly, not anywhere near what we were looking for, but it is a nice bump up, and I'm grateful for any bump up. But to your point, sir, I'm going to need your help. I had a meeting yesterday with the MLK Action Group, a local MLK Action Group on the Cape, and they heard about this. And they were quite upset. And they're right when they offered that we're going to need a lot more community outreach to the powers that be, both locally and up in Boston, if we're going to be successful in increasing the funding for the DA's office and therefore being able to provide greater services. I have to acknowledge, as an office, I can't do it myself. I tried as best I could in the four months, my very first four months coming into office. It consumed a lot of time to try to focus on getting the budget up. And again, I am deeply appreciative of the efforts of the Cape delegation. But in the candid conversation I had with these members of the MLK group yesterday, it became quite evident to me that I really do need help. So maybe, you know, in the fall, I will start going around again to the town boards saying, we're three months away now from January when the new election cycle starts, our new budget cycle starts up. Can we perhaps start getting into a position to try to increase the DA's budget so we can provide better services for our people?
I think that's exactly what we're looking for, is how can we help? You need to queue us up.
Right.
Because I think we're ready to be helpful.
Thank you.
I also just want to make a point that I'm glad you focused on the challenges that we're dealing with with respect to mental health and obviously the opioid crisis. We know that you want to be very hands-on and you want to be very engaged. And as you can tell from meeting with our police department, this is an area where we spend resources too in our community.
Yes.
And we're very committed. And we've added new staff, new personnel. We're definitely serious, and they're busy.
Right.
From what I've been told. So what I, what we need to know is, is how we can work together. Are there ways that we can be helpful to you, and then are there things that we should be focused on and that we should be doing? Because this board brings up these topics, has been bringing up these topics from time to time. And I think we're always looking for ways in which we can do more. We were very proud to support our police department. They asked for more help. They needed more personnel. They laid out the case to us on the mental health crisis, and we've helped them respond. So we're, our ears are wide open in these areas.
I want to, at this time, take a moment to certainly commend the work by the local police department. Every Tuesday, including this morning, I attend the Cape Cod Drug Task Force meetings, and they're every Tuesday at 10 o'clock. And representatives from the youth police department in particular, is he a sergeant now? Kent, Chris? Chris, you a sergeant? Officer Kent, is there. And he shares every single week several things that they have done the past week consistently. So, and he talks about all the officers that are in the detective unit, and quite honestly, it's impressive. So I definitely want to recognize that formally and let you all know it's working. So the commitment that you've made to the local police department and giving them the additional resources that they need. He comes in every single week, and he's not recycling stories. He's telling us, this is what we accomplished this past week, and it's quite awesome, honestly.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Mark. Dan?
It is, of course, a pleasure to have you here tonight.
Thank you, sir.
It's a new climate. The level of transparency is unmatched. We've never seen this before. Going out and meeting the chiefs, coming in front of select boards like this, I just congratulate you on
Thank you.
The outreach. You mentioned earlier some of the outreach efforts you're working with VAT, you're working with mental health and substance abuse. But I want people to also understand that on the other side of it, you've really taken public safety very, very seriously. I work with your staff on a daily basis, and we are now seeing dangerousness hearings on fentanyl traffickers. That means holding them without bail.
Yes, sir.
And people who illegally possess weapons, holding them without bail.
Yes, sir.
We've never seen this kind of strong response to the violence and to the deadly epidemic that we are experiencing, particularly in this town with fentanyl. So we are very, very grateful for the, not only for the outreach, but for the other hand that is taking public safety extremely seriously.
Sir, I appreciate that.
We also, unfortunately, we feel a little of your pain because with the state opioid settlements, we also got way underfunded compared to other similar-sized towns. So we are very invested in terms of trying to help you out because I think in that way we help ourselves out because we're not nearly getting the kinds of funds that we need for substance abuse here in this town. So count on our support and really, really appreciate the fact that you're here tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Horgan. Thank you.
When Dan talks about we're not getting funds of similarly sized towns, he's not talking about off Cape towns. He's talking about on the Cape.
Right.
I mean, we're way out of whack with the size of our community and the problems that we've experienced in terms of the money that we're getting. Smaller towns are getting a lot more money than we are. We don't, we're... Our town administrators fighting a good fight in trying to get answers and trying to, you know, reopen that issue, but...
If there's something I can do there, because, I'll let you know this. As District Attorney, I get noticed, they refer to as unattended deaths, whenever someone dies, there's no physician or anything at the time. So a lot of the unattended deaths, or many of them, it could be a suicide, but a lot of them are overdoses. And I can say with complete accuracy right now, since I've taken office on January 4th, I by far have had the most suspected overdose deaths in Yarmouth than any other town. And I believe the number now is eight overdose deaths in Yarmouth since January 4th when I took office. And I believe the next closest town, I think, is three. And that's data that I can actually provide, so whatever I can do to help in your efforts there.
That should help.
Okay.
We'll go to Dorcas.
Thank you very much for taking the time and come and talk to us. I agree with Mark, whatever we can do to work with you to help in your endeavor to increase your budget, please come back and see us. We'd be happy to help.
Thank you.
And I do think mental health and substance abuse are becoming the very prime areas that need to be dealt with because in the legal system, so much of your time is being spent on these two items. And the police department are not mental health providers. The District Attorney's office isn't either. So it's nice... So it's nice to see these individuals coming in now, working with the police departments, having, for instance, a court that is dedicated to mental health, and to take this into a realm where it really needs to be.
Yes.
I'm very happy to see that, and unfortunately, I think it's only going to increase. I don't see a decrease anytime soon.
I definitely agree with you there. I also want, just for your information, I guess, we are now entering the organizational phase of opening a recovery court on Martha's Vineyard. So this will be the third recovery court. If we can get it off the ground, I think we will be able to in my district. Presently, we have one in Barnstable, we have one in Thalmouth, and now we're trying to get one launched in Martha's Vineyard.
That's fantastic.
Yes, I'm quite happy about that one, too.
I have a couple of questions and then some comments. This program, I forget the name, if it was vertical or whatever, but...
Vertical prosecution.
Keeping the same DA with the case, is that just in the Superior Court, or is that going to be in the district courts, too?
No, no, this, I'm speaking specifically of the district court. Traditionally, in Superior Court, a case is assigned to a Superior Court prosecutor, and that's been the practice for quite some time. But in the district court, for the prior administration, basically, a couple of ADAs would be assigned to two towns typically, and then just whoever happened to be covering that session. We have structured it so whoever's got that case at arraignment literally will follow it to the pre-trial, to the motions, to either disposition or trial, all the way through. It took a little bit of organization to change that structure, but I have to tip my hat to my staff, my admin staff. They rolled with it, I'd say, inside of two weeks, they were able to pivot and make, that was quite an adjustment internally for the office because the practice had been, I honestly think, to the origins of the Rollins administration, the way it was set up. So I really tip my hat to my administrative staff.
I'd be particularly interested in seeing how this mental health court plays out, and hopefully it will, and it'll be, because I agree with what you said, it's a question of public safety. If these people's issues aren't addressed, if they're not treated, if they're not corrected, there's a revolving door. There'll be back, there'll be more victims, there'll be more crime because these people don't frankly have the wherewithal to change their lives without professional treatment.
Right. We are extremely fortunate to have Judge John Julian as the presiding justice. He gets it, and he's putting a lot of effort into launching this mental health court, and candidly, as the DA, I'm most grateful.
Yeah, and then as Dan has pointed out, you know, the opioid crisis really has two sides to it. One is, it is an illness, just like alcoholism or any other kind of addiction. I think the law has evolved in recognizing that. Back in the day, if somebody had drugs, they were a bad person, or they were using drugs. You know, the whole approach has been somewhat more enlightened, but still has a ways to go. But then, on the other hand, as Dan has pointed out, the peddlers of this stuff, people that are, in my words, and I use these words advisedly and always, people that are putting poison to our young people, that kills them.
Yes.
They're dangerous people. They're not just criminals, they present a real present danger to the population. And I'm glad to hear from Dan's remarks, I don't have any firsthand knowledge of what he said, but I'm sure it's accurate, that your office is treating that as an issue of public safety.
We instituted a policy, anyone charged with trafficking, those are your players, if you will, in fentanyl, heroin, or meth, we file for the dangerousness hearing that Dan mentioned to hold them without bail during the penancy of the case, and it appears to be working in the sense that the courts are generally allowing our motion. So those people are being held without bail, including the firearm cases. And I do want to highlight again, your police department, again, this past weekend, it was seemingly as if it was a three-day weekend in the middle of the summer, and we had lousy weather, as everyone knows, this past weekend. But we took five firearms off the street between Yarmouth PD and Barnstable PD, five over this past weekend alone. And we moved for dangerousness hearings and tried to have people's bail revoked that had open cases, and Yarmouth PD had at least two of those firearms, if not three. So it's, we're trying as aggressively as we possibly can, and a couple of those cases certainly had narcotics attributed to them as well. We're trying as aggressively as we can to remove those individuals from our neighborhoods.
Well, I know you've got a busy schedule. I'm sure we could talk for a long time about these issues. We're all interested in them, and I can tell you honestly, you have an open invitation.
Thank you.
Anytime you want to come back, you just call the office, we'll get your schedule to meet at your convenience and conducive to what you have on your agenda. And we're, as Mark said, we're aware of the fact that, you know, you can't change this funding and all these other issues singularly, and we are willing to help. We are committed to the same kind of issues that you addressed here tonight.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. I really appreciate everyone's time tonight.
So thanks for coming in.
Thank you for the invite. Take care.
Water rate hearing is next.
Mr. Chairman, if I could interrupt real quick.
Yes.
As you know, I've got a nurse coming in right now, and I'm about at the end of what I can do for this evening, so I'm going to try to sign back on again, but I may not be able to. But I very much appreciate the meeting.
We understand, and we appreciate your participation thus far, Peter. Take care of whatever you have to for yourself, and don't worry about us.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Jeff Colby, Public Works Director. Lori Rosala is with me, and she's our water and wastewater superintendent. This is the first hearing for the water rate changes, and the second one is scheduled for June the 27th. I did want to just highlight that the necessity of these rate increases is because of increasing costs operationally. It's, you know, hitting everyone, but, you know, particularly for our function related to supplying water. But primarily, it's related to capital projects. We've had several town meetings now where significant capital projects were approved, and they're very needed within our community. I'd like to highlight just a couple of those. The PFAS treatment for wells number four and five will be, that will be coming online this summer, but that is a cost that we're needing to make sure we can recoup within the water rates, which are self-supporting from the users for these capital improvements that I'm briefly touching upon here, as well as a permanent PFAS treatment specifically including wells number 10 and 11 is also something that's on the horizon, and we have a...
I'm going to stop you there. I just thought of something. Do we have to read this notice? And we didn't do that, and it's my oversight. The one I have is kind of microscopic. Does anyone have a, I think I guess I can make it up. Let me put this into the record, and I apologize, Jeff. Notice is hereby given that two public hearings will be held by the Board of Selectmen, meeting at 6:00 PM at Yarmouth Town Hall in the Hearing Room 1146, Route 28, South Yarmouth, Mass. On June 6, 2023, and June 27, 2023, concerning a proposed increase of water rates in Yarmouth. Written comments will be accepted by the Board of Selectmen via email at selectmen@yarmouth.ma.us. Until 4:30 PM Friday, June 2, 2023, verbal comments will be accepted at each public hearing starting at 6:00 PM. Persons interested in these changes are encouraged to attend. Proposed change currently, users are billed for water usage based on a three-tiered block rate. This proposal will change usage charges to a four-tiered block rate. Also, fees and rates will be increased as follows. Okay, so then it says, there's a table, and it says meter size, and then the next item is effective July 1, 2023, and then the next item is effective July 1, 2024. So meter size, smaller than one inch, the first increase is July 1, 2023, is to $30. The second one, a year later, to July 1, 2024, is $34. One inch, it goes $75 as of July 1, 2023, and $85 as of July 1, 2024. One and one-half inch meter size, it goes from 150 to a year later, same dates, 170. The two-inch meter goes to $240 on July 1, 2023, to $272 on July 1, 2024. The three-inch goes from $450 on July 1, 2023, to $510 effective July 1, 2024. The four-inch goes from 750 as of July 1, 2023, to 850 as of July 1, 2024. And then the quarterly usage rates based on volume of water for the same periods, July 1, 2023, and then a further increase on July 1, 2024, are as follows. The first 15,000 gallons goes from 238 to 274. From 16,000 gallons to 30,000 gallons goes from $2.80 effective July 1, 2023, to $3.22 effective July 1, 2024. From 31,000 to 50,000 gallons is $3.30 effective July 1, 2023, and goes to $3.80 as of July 1, 2024. And over 50,000 gallons goes to $3.90 effective July 1, 2023, to $4.50 effective July 1, 2024. Thank you. I apologize for the break in your presentation, but I think we had to get that notice out into the record.
Great, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for doing that. I was just highlighting a couple of the projects that we've undertaken that have been approved that are causing the rate increase in order to cover those projects. The PFAS one is the, you know, certainly the biggest project that's looming, and we have some success that's coming online this summer, as well as water main replacements along Route 6A, as well as Route 28. The Route 28 work to be done in conjunction with the wastewater collection system implementation makes sense to do that work at the same time. That's some of our largest diameter distribution system, as well as some of our oldest pipe in the network. And then we're finishing up the pump station rehab project. That alone is approximately, that was the Phase 1, 2, and now 3 phase of that project, that was approximately $7 million in and of itself. So these are costly but very necessary projects, and I think you've seen all the pictures and from previous presentations as to why that work was necessary on those 41 buildings that were improved as part of that project. With that said, if you could do the next slide, this is what we'll be talking about tonight, the current rates, the operating expenses, which Lori will go in a little more depth than I just touched upon, the capital expenses, the need for the revenue to cover those items, then the proposed rates, which are two components in which the chairman just read from, the meter charge being one component, and then the usage charge being the other, and then a comparison to the neighboring towns. I know that's always come before you for fee hearings, we like to show where we stand with regards to other communities of similar size or on Cape Cod. So what I'd like to do now is turn that over to Lori for that more detail associated with these rates. What I do want to say before she begins is this analysis that she's done is excellent. The last time I was before you on water rates, two years ago, we had a consultant that helped us along, and it really was just a fancy spreadsheet, if you will, was the work product. But what Lori has done through a pretty powerful tool that the town has recently taken on is pretty impressive. This analysis, in my opinion, is even better than a consultant would have provided for us. So with that said, I'll turn it over to Lori.
Okay, so I just wanted to remind people of our current rate structure. We bill quarterly, and we bill based on your meter size. There's one charge, and then the second part is for water usage. So the rates are there, most people are probably familiar, if you pay your bill, the $26. It's gone up from, I think, 23 back in 2020, and then the rates per gallon. The thing that's important to note is that we did raise rates in 2021 and 2022, but prior to that, they hadn't been raised since 1995. So in 25 years, with that no change of rates, there was very little capital investment and a lot of deferred maintenance. So that's what Jeff was just speaking of, some of the capital items and the phased building rehab projects is all just fixing deferred maintenance. So in the last two years, we have done Phase 1 and Phase 2, which has been paid out of reserves, but now we're running out of the reserves. So we did take on this time, we're using, it's called Water Worth is the model we're using, as opposed to having a consultant do this for us. So we'll be adding, I'll be showing you all the inputs into the model so that you can understand where the numbers are kind of coming from, which gives us the amount of money we need to make each year in order to stay within our reserve, keep our reserve fund in the positive. And then I'll get into how that changes into the rates. So this is our operating budget projections. The 2023 number is, you know, what we're in right now. The 2024 number, you'll note, there's kind of a bigger jump there, and that's because we moved some capital items to operating, some annual capital that you see every year, which really is maintenance, we moved into operating. And then we use the inflation rates that you can see on the left side. Overall, from after 2024, it's a 3% increase per year, even though there's kind of varying levels on individual items. So that's operating, kind of the simple part. Getting into capital projects. So if you remember back when we did the rate study the last time, we based everything on our Kleinfelder master plan, that was done in 2024, Kleinfelder being the consultant that did the plan. At that time, they recommended $38 million worth of improvements over five, it was a five-year plan, which was never going to happen because that's way too much money to do in five years, but, and that 38 million was before PFAS became a contaminant of concern. So all of the numbers going forward, you're adding a lot more to deal with PFAS. So this list shows all the projects that we have projected going forward. Everything in 2020, listed under 2024, was either approved at this past town meeting or prior town meetings, so they are approved, and, you know, we need to find the money for them because they have been approved, as well as the Route 28 water main contracts four and five are shown in 2025, but they have been approved. So we have over $25 million worth of work that has been approved at town meeting that needs to be funded. So thinking about how we're going to fund them, we're not, not every project will be funded in the same way. Some of the smaller, every-year type of stuff will be funded through reserves, and this is what's showed here. We expect anything related to PFAS, that we'll be able to get an SRF loan, a drinking water SRF loan, that's a state revolving fund loan. And for the lead service line inventory, which is previously approved and already underway, we ended up getting a grant through SRF. And then any water main projects generally do not score well with SRF, so we won't be like, won't be likely to get SRF funding for those, so we just assumed a traditional loan for those. For the PFAS-related SRF, that's a 0% interest rate for a 20-year loan, and that can include engineering, which is new for PFAS and SRF. Usually, engineering's not part of an SRF, so that's a good thing. And then the others, we assumed 30-year loans, 5% interest. And going forward with our model, we'll be able to make any adjustments that come up if we get better rates, hopefully, going down the line. So this chart shows the capital projects each year, the amount of debt we're taking on, and then that's the pink, and then the blue line behind is the debt repayment. So you can see by 2029, we're up to about $2 million a year in just debt repayment. And our current budget is in the $4 to $5 million range, so that's a huge increase over our current operating budget. So you put all this information together, and we end up here. So the red dashed line is a million-dollar reserve threshold. We want to keep $1 million in the bank at all times. The black line is our cash position, so how close we are to that threshold. And in order to keep the black line at or above the red, the yellow shows how much money we need to make each year, revenue we need to generate. So in 2023, our budgeted revenue, what we're hoping to get in was 4.3 million. By 2024, we need about 5.6 million. That's a 30% increase. And then going forward, for FY '25, it's about 6.4 million, which is a 15% increase. Before you fall out of your chair, about that 30% increase, we are, our revenues are much higher, or not much higher, but are high... revenues are much higher, or not much higher, but are higher, I should say, this year so far than, than budgeted. That four-point-three, we actually have already brought in, that line in our budget already has four-point-five million dollars in it, at least as of June first. So we're a little bit above, making it our increase a little bit less than thirty percent what we actually need. And you can kind of see things kind of calm down and flatten out near the end. The black line goes more level, and that's when all of these big projects that we're talking about are in loan repayment, rather than actually taking out a lot of new loans at that point. Granted, we don't know at this point what else is going to come up, what other projects we might be needing in the future. Okay. So now we know how much money we need to bring in each year to keep our reserves at the million dollars for the next few years. So it's time to look at the rates. The first part I wanted to look at was the, the meter charges. My first thought, or our first thought on that is the twenty-six dollars and then going up, like, where does that come from? Why, why do we have those numbers? I really don't have any good reason. And in talking with the people at Waterworth, our, the modeling program, they suggested using the capacity of the meter. So a lot of other systems use the American Waterworks meter capacity, so every meter has a certain amount of flow it can allow through it. A five-eighth meter, which is our small meter, can handle up to about twenty gallons a minute. And as you go up, the meter can go larger volumes. So a two-inch meter can do a hundred-and-sixty gallons a minute. So a hundred-and-sixty divided by twenty is a factor of eight. So you would charge your, whatever your base rate is for the five-eighth meter, you multiply by eight. And that way, you're charging the customer based on the capacity of their meter, the amount of water available to them. So it's a logic, kind of how it gives you a logical, defendable, um, method for determining the ratio of the meter charges. So the column, the furthest column on the right would be the, um, meter charges if you, we kept the twenty-six dollars as the base ratio. We're not keeping the twenty-six dollars, but that's the ratio. So you can see some of the mid-sized meters actually go down, where the large meters go up significantly, particularly the four-inch meter. But you can see we only have four meters that are four-inch meters, so. And it's not a huge impact to, in either direction for our revenue, but it just gives us something, you know, logical to base the numbers on. Okay, so that's that. So that's the meter, the meter charge part, going into the usage blocks. So our current usage blocks, um, they break at twenty-five thousand gallons, seventy-five thousand, and then seventy-five thousand gallons is, is it. Currently at the moment, what this is trying to show is that only four percent of all of our bills, so the blue bars are a count of bills at, given volume. It actually, the chart keeps going to the right, but it, for clarity, zoomed in over here. So you can see on the left side, there's a lot of bills that are less than, bill less than a thousand, which is your winter seasonal bills, where the, the bill is zero. And then going forward, you get most bills are less than the twenty-five thousand gallons. So a lot of people never hit the next, the higher level cost of water. And ninety-six percent of all bills don't even get into the top bracket. And consumption-wise, you know, it's, it's only about, you know, only seventy percent of consumption is charged that highest rate. So that's our current block. So the goal here was to try and change the block so that we can kind of keep the lowest bracket low, so anyone who is just using water for the essentials will continue to pay a lower amount than anyone who's using a lot of water. And by adding more blocks and increasing the rates, you're also encouraging conservation. So these are suggested rates or recommended blocks, which we would go, the first block would be fifteen thousand gallons, which if you break that down in the quarter, that's a hundred-and-sixty-five gallons per day, which, um, at sixty-five or gallons per person per day, that easily covers essential consumption for two people in a house for that quarter. So those people who are just, um, using the minimum amount of water, not watering their lawns, will have the lowest impact here because they'll still, they'll stay in that low bracket. And that would cover about twenty percent of the consumption, going up to the thirty-thousand block. That's another twenty percent of the consumption. That would, you know, cover maybe family of four or five, that, um, you know, they maybe use a little more water if you have kids, but, you know, they'll still be in the lower end of the block, uh, blocks. Going up to the next block is fifty thousand, and then over fifty thousand would be where the highest block would be at this time, and that would include about forty-five percent of all the consumption. So once again, putting the burden more on the higher users. Let's see here. And that does include, I thought it interesting, that highest block will include about twenty-eight-hundred residential customers. Surprising that that many residential customers uses that much water.
Yeah.
So this would certainly encourage conservation. So with all that in mind, basically, we take all the information and put it into this model, and then I'm able to adjust, once we kind of have our ratios that we want, adjust the rates based on, you know, you put the smallest meter number in and make that adjustment, and I can kind of iteratively adjust until we get to the revenue that we need each year. So these are the rates that we are proposing. Chairman Stone got to read them all out loud, so I won't have to. Overall, what you're looking at in 2024, the lowest user, so someone who's just using water kind of in that lowest block or the lowest two blocks, it's about a fifteen percent increase in overall rates, whereas a higher user is going to have a higher increase, some of them up to twenty-five percent of increase. And the biggest, the most impacted accounts are the large meters that use a lot of water, which is hotels, like Mayflower Place, the nursing homes that is, um, in the water park. And then in 2025, that increase is just a straight fifteen percent increase on all, on all rates. We didn't have to, because we adjusted the way that we charged, the first year kind of is a more, everyone is impacted differently depending on your usage and your meter. The second year, it's going to be across the board, everyone's going to pay fifteen percent more. So one thing that we don't know, I mean, there's always a lot of unknowns with drinking water, how much is it's going to rain, if there's going to be a drought, that, that all impacts our revenues. Also, with this new structure, we don't know how our customers will react. They may decide, I'm not going to use as much water, or they may say, I don't care, and just keep using water. So putting this in place, we'll give it the, you know, the two years we have scheduled, we'll be able to put any, all our new data each year into this model and make any adjustments and, um, you know, really be able to, on an annual basis, evaluate if these rates are making sense and if we need to make any changes at any time. And we can put in, um, down the line, like, when we do get our loans and our loan rates, we can put all that stuff in when the timing comes. So the last part is just our comparison to other towns. So this is average, an average residential customer, so it's more someone who would fall into that thirty thousand block at sixty-three thousand gallons annual, that's about four people at sixty-five gallons per person per day. In this case, so the towns going across are Yarmouth, in green, of course, Dennis, Orleans, Harwich, Barnstable, and Hyannis. So we're the lowest at that rate for residential at, um, that average cost of just under three-hundred dollars per, uh, per year. And then the last, it's just looking at a couple of the, a couple of our common customers, which would be hotels and restaurants. Even at the higher levels, we are still one of the lowest. Dennis has us beat a little bit, but otherwise, every other town is still a more expensive place to do business water-wise than Yarmouth. I think that's all I have.
Yeah. Any questions that the board might have, we're happy to answer.
Well, we're going to go, if it's okay, we'll go to public first. Norm has got his hand raised, but I'm not going to call on Norm. I'm going to make him wait a couple of minutes. No. Norm, can you hear me? How do we get Norm?
How's that?
Okay. I told you I wouldn't forget you again.
Yes, thank you. I've got a couple of questions. The anticipated cost, uh, estimates, how much of, of the total of the cost estimates for the next five years is related to the PFAs projects?
We have, um, for the current project in places, it's about three-point-seven million, and then we're estimating, we're just assuming that a treatment plant will have to be built sometime in the next five years at fifteen million dollars and one-point-five million dollars of engineering. So just, just around twenty million dollars for PFAS.
Twenty million dollars? Okay. So, so that is, how, what is the total cash flow in that period? Total expenses that have to be met?
So as far as total capital projects, I think the, the PFAS is probably pretty close to fifty percent of the total capital projects because we do have water main replacements, but those are also very expensive. So in just round numbers without having the exact details, the PFAS is a very expensive challenge we have before us, and probably about fifty percent of our capital projects costs are related to that, that we anticipate over the next five-year period.
So, so with this twenty million dollars will, of cost in the next five years, will, will everything, will, will the rate increase cause that to be fully funded?
We, we have anticipated that the temporary PFAS is covered as well as a study and some portion of the capital for a permanent treatment facility. The, the costs associated with the permanent treatment facility are not fully known at this time. It hasn't even been designed yet. It hasn't, uh, we haven't determined exactly how many of the wells will need to connect to that permanent treatment, so there's still some unknowns associated with that. That's why tonight we're before the board to talk about the next two years. What it looks like past that two years, we'll have a better understanding after that two-year period as to what the rates might need to do to cover the total cost. But right now, we're projecting some costs associated with permanent PFAS treatment that we don't have a complete definition to, but we're anticipating it to be in the fifteen million dollar range for the permanent installation, but that's still to be determined.
All right. Now, you know, Jeff, I'm sure you're, you're very aware that DuPont has recently agreed to a one-point-two-billion-dollar settlement for PFAS pollution, and that, that funding will become available to municipalities and, and other, uh, interests that have been damaged as a result of the, uh, of PFAS. What position is the town taking with regard to that?
I think our town administrator has, has some commentary on that.
Yeah, yes, I'd like to address that point. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. And I just would say, with the leadership of our water department working through the Board of Selectmen and having our town council as our supervisor from the, the legal standpoint, the town of Yarmouth has engaged special counsel to initiate litigation on behalf of the town of Yarmouth for the pollution that was caused by the firms creating the PFAS materials. Now, the complaints that we have filed in the courts through this special counsel, while part of the national team of litigation, this is not a class action suit. These are, there have been specific claims that have been registered and filed with the court on behalf of the town of Yarmouth. And through this national litigation team, what we've seen since the time that the town has initiated these suits, that we're beginning to see the first settlements. So a national fund is being created that there will be, um, all of the towns, I think, that were involved prior to these funds being created will have the primary position in terms of the disbursement. But nationally, there will be created that, that there are so many of these cases involved and so many, just the list of the people that are the companies and, you know, what positions they hold in it is extremely long. So just in a, in a nutshell, the town of Yarmouth is among the forefront of municipalities throughout the nation that is involved with the litigation, and, you know, we hope to see funds, although it is not known at that time, that, at this time, what the exact distribution of those will be. We are involved in that process.
Thank you. Thank you for that explanation. A couple of questions and clarification. First of all, is the, is the source of the PFAS, um, known at this point? Have we isolated whether it's the town dump or whether it's the range on federal property on the Cape that is polluting the Hyannis wells as well? Have we, have we determined the source of the pollution?
Uh, the short answer is no. Definitively, where it's coming from is, is not clear. There is the potential for it to be landfill potential because of the location of wells ten and eleven being south of that, but the locations of wells four and five are nowhere near the landfill. So there's also the possibility, very distinct possibility, that this is coming from individual septic systems as well. There's personal care products, there's clothing, there's many other things that would be coming from everyday use that could be going down septic systems that could be contributing to this as well. These wells that we have impacted are ones that are in very densely populated areas, and so that's certainly, you know, the areas that we're needing to address first. But this issue of emerging contaminants is something that's regularly changing. The standards for which we need to be addressing this are also in the process of changing. We are meeting the DEP requirements, but the EPA has come out, the Environmental Protection Agency has come out with draft rules that are, bring that even lower, that might impact, you know, other wells. So it is a very dynamic situation that we're trying to stay on top of, but the exact origin is not clear. What's clear is the, you know, who's manufactured these chemicals and, you know, kind of where they're coming from as far as who produced them, but how they got into our drinking water supply is much less clear.
Okay. Let me turn to another issue at this point, and I appreciate the clarification on that. We're spending about four-hundred to five-hundred thousand dollars a year for utilities. Is most of that electricity? The, the water department has enormous tracts of land in town. Has consideration been given to setting up solar arrays to offset the, the utility usage?
Yeah, that's a, a good question. We have looked at that. We'll continue to look at that. Much of the electricity associated with the wells is being offset by other arrays the town has already installed, mostly on rooftops. We're in the process of putting one currently at the, the senior center, but also two of our fire stations currently have rooftop arrays as well as the storage tank at the septic treatment plant, as well as this building. And the net metering credits are being used to offset some of those costs associated with water currently. So it's, it's really kind of looking at the big picture with regards to the town's solar production overall and using the water cost as some of those offsets associated with that. So it is something we're looking at, and it is limited to how much you can install solar because we have, you know, limited number of, you know, amounts of usage, and we have to accredit that to, you know, existing arrays we already have. So there are some opportunities to add solar. We're looking at, at the, the DPW building site, but you have to have usage that you're offsetting associated with that, which we do currently have, but we're getting very close to offsetting our complete usage within the town.
Well, what about, what about the town land itself? I mean, the town, uh, the water department has huge tracts of land set aside, and, and those, those tracts of land are, they could be tree-covered or whatever. I mean, you know, um, I would, I would think that it, there would be opportunity for installing solar on, on those tracts of land.
It's certainly something that we've looked at. The lack of tree cover is certainly a component that's more desirable, so in the case of like the wastewater treatment plant, we're looking at essentially covering all of the infiltration beds with the solar array because there won't be any trees or other things that need to be cleared in So in the case of like the wastewater treatment plant, we're looking at essentially covering all of the infiltration beds with the solar array because there won't be any trees or other things that need to be cleared in that area. But certainly looking at all available spaces is part of the plan. But as I mentioned before, we have most of our usages offset by existing arrays.
So you're saying that, that usage is offset by, but, but yeah, you show 400,000 dollars in, in the, in the budget. So, so you're saying the 400, the 450,000 dollars of annual usage for utilities is in, is offset by revenues? Is that in the revenue projection that you have?
I guess the question is, is that figure you spend for utilities after the credits or are the credits?
Thank you, Mike.
Applied to that to further reduce that figure?
The credits are applied to that to further reduce that. It'll never be zero because we don't own these panels. They're owned by developers, which then charge us a discounted rate for electricity usage. So it'll never be zero because we don't own the panels in every case. We do own them on this building and, you know, some very limited locations. But the vast majority of the solar panels we have are owned by others, which just charge us a discounted rate. So it's, it's against the overall usage. It's a credit, but again, it'll never be zero for the usage.
So, so the only way we would get 100% offset is if we invested in the solar panels ourselves?
That's correct.
Okay, all right. Well, that's something the town needs to consider. So the other question I have is. An assumption that's built into this plan is a million dollars of reserve. Have you challenged that assumption?
That's something that's looked at regularly. It was a level that was established in, when our previous finance director was here and working with some of the bonding agencies that want to ensure that you have a reasonable amount of reserves on hand. You can't bring that down to zero. Essentially, it's the rainy day fund of the operation. And so it's been reviewed with the bonding agencies and it was determined that that's an appropriate level. It's somewhat arbitrary, but you don't want to bring that down to zero. Again, there's could be unforeseen costs that we need to have funds reserved for usage within water. And so that is a reasonable level for our size of utility. I've looked at other utilities that might be a little bit lower on reserves, but they're a smaller utility. And some of the larger utilities might have a larger reserve level, but it is one that we've reviewed with the finance director. When there's a new finance director in place, we'll review that again to see if that's a appropriate level, but it is based upon research we've done in the past.
Have you done an analysis of the last five years, for example, to determine what the demands on that reserve would be? I guess my point here is that a million dollars earns 50,000 dollars a year in interest. And, you know, that's, that's a revenue projection. Is that million dollars invested, first of all, that we have in reserves so that we're gaining 50,000 dollars in interest annually? And if not, why not? And secondly, have you done the analysis to show whether in fact the reserves have been drawn upon at any point in the last five years or 10 years? To determine whether that million dollars is in fact required?
Well, again, the million dollars is a, is a floor. We don't want to go below that. We have had more healthy reserves and I think as Lori mentioned in her presentation, you know, we've had reserves and it's printed in the warrant at town meeting when the budget's approved. But it has been as, as high as four or four and a half million dollars in recent years. But because of the projects we're doing, we've spent that reserves down and the million dollars is, is the floor. We just don't want to go to zero on that.
Jeff, I, I appreciate that. This is, this is a question for the select board because the select board knows that there is a substantial amount of funds at, at the town level in reserves. There's a substantial amount of free cash. There's a substantial amount of additional reserves, rainy day funds set aside. I mean, how many different cushions does the town need in order to operate effectively? The town doesn't need all these redundancies in cushions that come at a tax, at a cost to the taxpayers.
Aren't these, aren't these enterprise funds that carry over from year to year as opposed to free cash that has to be accounted for in a given fiscal year?
Yes.
That's correct. The enterprise fund is separate completely. If you put yourself into a situation that you're rolling deficits from the enterprise fund into the general fund, that's a doomsday scenario for municipal finance.
Just like the Gulf Fund did.
Yeah, and that, that's the last thing you want to do.
The other thing, Norm, is I, I would challenge the assumption that we could make 5% at least in recent history on the million dollar reserve funds. Now, maybe interest rates are finally getting up to the 4% rate or whatever, probably in more in CDs. But historically, let's say the last five or 10 years, we've gotten nowhere near that for, I don't, I don't have the exact figure for you at this point in time, but I'll bet you, you'd be lucky if you're getting a percent.
Yeah, I, I agree with you, Mike. But however, built into these projections is a 5% cost of borrowing.
Correct.
So if you're building in a 5% cost of borrowing and you've got a million dollars sitting on the, on the balance sheet. Jeez, why don't you use 100 dollars?
I see what you're saying now. You're saying if you reduce the reserve, you would reduce the borrowing and therefore you would be saving at the rate of 5%.
That's correct.
Okay, I understand it now. All right, Norm, we're gonna have to move on to see if anyone else has comments. If we have any additional time and you have questions, I'll come back to you. But I want to see, is there anyone else in the public that wants to be heard on this? And then I want to go to the board. Mark?
Thank you. With respect to the overall plan, I, I think it's, it's a very comprehensive and very thoughtful approach. And I want to commend you for the, the level of detail and the amount of time and energy that went into putting this together. I think it's great that we can now do this in-house, this kind of work. We never had this capacity before. And I think it just shows the level of, the talent level and the diligence on the part of our water and sewer superintendent. So kudos to you, Lori. With respect to the overall financial layout of the plan, I think we're hitting all the right bases. I think we're looking at all the right costs. I'm not intimidated by the reserve numbers whatsoever. I know our prior finance director wanted to make sure that all our accounts were structured in such a way that we could essentially in the big picture, always make a pitch for getting a, a much better bond rating. So I know these, 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 these financials are looked at and scrutinized by a number of folks. And I know our finance director, who helped set the pattern for this overall program, I think, had that in mind, particularly in dealing with some of the reserves. I look at the operating budget numbers. I think, I think it's commendable that we're able to keep our operating budget increases pretty much in line. The, the increases are very modest overall in terms of what we have to deal with. And, and, and obviously we, we've had this conversation before about the capital. The investments that are being made now that some might be concerned about in terms of the cost are investments that are long overdue. I mean, essentially this town neglected making investments in its infrastructure for years. And so while we've had, we've had years where the opportunity to set aside funds has been there, we've never taken advantage of it. So now we're playing catch up and we have segments of our system that have been so old and either out of date or in such disrepair that we really don't have a lot of flexibility in our timeframe. There are things that we just need to do. So this capital program is a very reasonable one. I would argue that we're not doing enough and we're not going fast enough, but obviously we need to balance that with the cost implications that we're dealing with here. So I think, I think our DPW director, I think our water and super superintendent have done a fantastic job in presenting these recommendations to us. I would like to also go back to the PFAS situation. Unfortunately, at a town like Yarmouth is, in dealing with this, we're sort of left on our own to have to absorb those costs. We are doing essentially what every other community wrestling with PFAS is doing. We are the ones that are stuck paying the costs and we're the ones that are hoping, and I say that hoping, that there's some settlement funds that can at least recover some of the cost. Now, if anybody thinks that we're going to get 100% reimbursement or coverage on these costs, they're just, they're just not dealing with reality. Anything that we get, it's going to be almost like the opioid settlement, all right? We're going to have these huge needs. Well, you can hope all you want, but the reality is, is it's the demand for cleanup and treatment and remediation is so high that, you know, you can read in the newspapers, you know, 1.2 billion with DuPont and there are other settlements being talked about. But when you spread those costs to the thousands of communities that are doing exactly what we're doing, there's only so much money we're going to get out of this. So I think it's important that we realize that on the settlement side, we're only going to get so much. So I think, I think you've done a, a good job. My one question though is in terms of leakage in the town, do we have a pretty good handle at this point in terms of water leakage in the system in terms of what the overall percentage is, Lori?
Yeah, we just had a system-wide leak detection program, had an outside consultant come in and do it. And they actually, they didn't find very many leaks. We had some service leaks, a couple of main leaks, but not, nothing really big. So we're actually a pretty tight system, which is kind of surprising to me.
It is surprising, given the, given some of the, the conditions that we're finding, you know, conditions that we're finding within the system. So I think that, that's, that's very, very good news. So I'm very supportive of the proposal. I know we have, what, two hearings, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, maybe one more.
So, but thanks for answering the questions, I appreciate it.
Okay, Dan?
I want to thank you for the presentation. It's a lot of information to take in. It's comprehensive, but it's a lot. So I appreciate that. I still need to do a little work myself. Most of my questions actually were answered through the presentation because it's, sometimes it's hard to pull it out of the documents that you give us. But the increase is not insubstantial. So, you know, we obviously want to look at this carefully and make sure that we're not pricing people out of their ability to afford water. I appreciate the fact that it's, it's usage based. So it's great that we're encouraging people to conserve if it's by the anvil of more money. But it's necessary and we know, you know, we've already had a dry May. So we may very well be back in a situation where we were last summer. Hopefully I'll bring this up at selection item, but I'd love to have you guys come back and just give us an update on water and where we are and how we're doing. But one question that I, you were making your presentation earlier and it caught me off guard a little bit. You mentioned that you were running some of your capital costs through the operating budget and that surprised me. Why would you do that?
No, there were items, it's, it's really kind of the other side of the coin. There were items that were clearly, should have been operating related items that were maintenance, as Lori mentioned before, that were in the capital plan. And it was depressing or artificially lowering what the operating cost should be. So those things have now been added into the operating budget. I, I wouldn't say they're capital in the standard sense of, you know, the way we've defined capital as a, as a community. They're not water mains, they're not the, you know, water treatment facilities. They really are meter replacements, you know.
Well maintenance.
Yeah, well maintenance, things like that. They're really all maintenance related costs that for years and years were just kept in the capital budget for water that have been added back into the operating budget. It's appropriate process to have them within the operating budget for maintenance.
No, I appreciate that. Maybe I misunderstood it. And the only other question I have right now, I think you mentioned that there's about 25 million in projects that exist currently. Those have all been funded with reserve for appropriation, haven't they?
No.
Is that being done through borrowing? How is that being funded?
It depends on the project. So the PFAS projects are SRF borrowing. Some of the smaller ones are just through, through reserves, but like all the water main jobs will be loans, traditional loans. So planning on 30 years, 5% at the moment, unless we can get something better.
And we're only looking at a two-year cycle at this point to, to give us some flexibility in terms of, we don't know what's around the corner.
Right, I know there's some other water systems out there that have decided that in order to keep up with costs, they'll say, hey, for the next five or 10 years, we're going to increase rates at 10% a year and that's the plan. Our recommendation is just to look at the next two-year period, see where we are at that point and see what adjustments may or may not be necessary at that point.
All right. I, I was pleased to see that even with the increases that we're being extremely competitive with our neighbors. So thank you very much for the presentation.
Thank you, Dan. Dorkus?
Thank you for the presentation. It answered an awful lot of questions that I had. I have concerns about the amount of the increase, given some of our residents that we have in town and their affordability. And so you've given me an awful lot to think about. I know that we have another meeting on this. Other than that, I think all my questions have been answered. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I'm finished because of the, we have to move on with the agenda and the lateness of the hour, I'll pass until the next hearing. So we're going to continue this matter until June 27th, 2023. Do I need a motion on that, Bob, or, or not?
No, it's been advertised so that.
Just announce it.
It stays open until.
Yeah, I don't think I do either. So this hearing is, remains open. It will be continued to June 27th, 2023, 6 o'clock.
Thank you.
Next matter is recreation update. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. So here to give a quick update for.
Will you identify yourself, not, not for us, but for the public?
Anthony Bennett, Recreation Director. So update recreation for upcoming summer. So right now we have 16 youth and adult programs that are currently open with a couple more that we're finalizing on dates, instructors and a couple of different vendors. We're bringing back the summer movie series. So July 12th, 26th and the 9th, we're going to be offering free movies over at Bass River Beach, which was a hit, I'm told in the past. So we're bringing it back for this year.
Is that Smuggler's Beach?
Yes.
Just asking.
I thought we had voted at some point in time to go back to the original name of Smuggler's Beach. Pat Armstrong always called it Bass River Beach.
We did, and there's a sign there that says Smuggler's Beach.
Smuggler's Beach.
Smuggler's Beach.
Make a note of that.
Our pickleball membership, we're at 450 members strong right now. Also, we've been utilizing the Madison Keys Middle School Gym for indoor pickleball. We've been doing indoor basketball. We're looking to do some more upcoming programs there, including indoor soccer, volleyball, more basketball and some other cardio and exercise programs in the future. Our current staffing, so we are working on this week, we're going to restart the process to hiring an assistant recreation director, which is great. Currently, we have most of our positions filled across all of our different things we're doing this summer. So our sailing department, sailing program, we're fully staffed. Flax camp, we're fully staffed there. Our lifeguards, which has constantly been a battle, not just us, but all around the state, around the country. We currently have 28 lifeguards. We were able to get five new guards this year. We have two junior guards, which is great, younger kids to hopefully continue to, to work and hang around for a little bit. We have two beach directors, one of them is an LGI, so they're able to train all of our new applicants who want to become lifeguards. We do all the training in-house and certify them ourselves, which is really advantageous, you know, we're the market of. You know, we're, the market of lifeguards is so slim. So we're able to get kids who want to be lifeguards and train them. They don't have to go take a test or go, you know, far away to get certified. So that's, that's great. We're going to be start, we're going to start guarding full-time, seven days a week, starting Friday, June 23rd, and we'll go through Labor Day weekend. We recently have been working with the community development to purchase new Mobi chairs for our beaches. So we got approved funding through the CDBG funds to order 12 new Mobi chairs. So the Mobi chairs will be accessible at different beaches as well as at our office to, if someone wants to use a Mobi chair at one of our beaches, they can stop by, fill out a little bit of paperwork, bring the Mobi chair to the beach, go on the sand, all the way in the water, and able to float in the water. So it, it gives access to anyone who wants to, to use our beaches and our, and our, our water. So we're excited about that. Hopefully, we'll have those in the next couple of weeks. We're a couple of things we've done for staffing. So we posted the jobs on website, flyers, Facebook. We posted on Handshake, which is a college job platform that Cape Cod is on, Bridgewater State, a lot of local schools, and we posted all of our positions on there. We've gone to three high school job fairs at DY and Sturgis. We've sent all of our job postings to the school to have them post them up and hopefully a couple of teachers might want to work this summer for us as a lifeguard, we'll take them. We attended the ribbon cutting at the, the new DY school, hopefully to get some more people. And of course, the, the best way, friends, talking to friends to get some, you know, new people working for us. So we've been busy on the recruitment side of things and right now, we're in a pretty good position staffing-wise, which is good.
Let me ask you this question. Would you say you had 28 guards at this point?
28 guards, yeah.
How many would you have if you were fully staffed, if you got what you needed to cover the beaches?
So to cover all the beaches, probably closer to 40 or 50.
Yeah, probably around more closer, I think, to 40 than 50. But I'll tell you, I was under a commission for many, many years and we always had problems, even way back then, with getting lifeguards. There's always a challenge and there's, there's a multiplicity of factors. If kids go back to school early or, you know, the health issues with, with sun exposure, pay competitive rates with other towns. Some people like the glamour of Coast Guard Beach and beaches like that. There's, there's a lot of dynamics that go into that. It's, it's not an easy thing. So what beaches will you not be staffing?
So the beaches that we are definitely going to be staffing is Gray's Beach or Bass Hole. There's a lot of different names for each, each place.
That's interchangeable.
Smugglers or Bass, however you want to call it.
That's not interchangeable.
And Siegel Beach. Siegel Beach is kind of, if we have enough guards that week...
You got to do Siegel, yeah. You got to do Smugglers Beach. What about?
Parker's River.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we haven't guarded there in the last few years, just because of, just staffing.
How about the Residence Beach?
No.
No?
No. Those have been the three since, at least since I've been working, that we've been able to mostly cover throughout the summer.
I could do any of the ponds.
So we do Flax Pond, so our summer camp, we...
Yeah, but Dennis Pond, no.
Dennis Pond, no.
Okay.
And it's, and another part of the competitiveness, if you can work at Market Basket and make almost the same amount of money and sit in the air conditioning all day.
Do you know off the top of your head what, what the pay rate is at Yarmouth is paying guards right now?
So new guards make $19, returning guards make 20, and head guards make 21. So we're very competitive comparing to our neighbors. Junior guards are 16, 50. So, but not bad for, you know, a junior guard position. So we're pretty competitive on that, on that aspect.
How many guards do you have on per day? Like, say, Smugglers, how many guards would you have on?
So the bare minimum that we put there would be four. We've had as many as six or seven if we don't have...
It's a big beach, yeah.
Yeah. If we don't have enough to, we don't want to spread ourselves too thin where we only have...
Four would be good.
Yeah, three guards. So, you know, Gray's Beach is obviously the most dangerous beach where we have the most rescues. Luckily, we only had a few of them last year and, you know, they weren't, weren't serious. But our guards acted, you know, their training kicked in and they, you know, took care of what they needed to do.
How many do you put at Gray's?
Sorry?
How many lifeguards?
Uh, three.
Three?
Yep.
And how about Siegel?
Siegel, same as Bass River, so we'll put four. We've had five at each beach because then we won't have enough to cover Parker's River, so we can't, like, it's same thing. We don't want to spread ourselves too thin. If some, if someone has to go home, then we have to pull everyone off of one beach and spread them out. So it's challenging and, you know, I think it's a societal thing where kids don't want to work nearly, nearly as much as they have in the past.
That's another factor.
What are the hours that the guards would cover?
Sure. So 8:30 to 4:30. So 8:30, between 8:30 and about 9:30, 9:45, they're doing workouts and training. So that can include swimming, working CPR, running, all that fun stuff. And then they start guarding the beaches between around 10, 10:15. Our Flax camp, we start at 7:45 because the kids are on property. So we have them down there to make sure no kids are wandering down to the pond or other people may be there early and we have them, you know, leave and not go swimming when the kids are there. So usually those three are the main ones that we will be at, you know, each day.
And how about your reservations for Flax Pond? Where do you stand for this coming summer?
As far as the pavilion rentals?
No, I mean, as the kids, the kids that are going to actually participate at the camp.
Oh, yeah, sure. So, sorry. So we average about 230 kids per week. So out of 1,840 spots for the eight weeks, we have 34 spots left for grades three through six. You know, that's a lot of information, but basically our grades three through six are packed and we actually added a couple more, 10 more spots each week. Part of that was our ninth graders. We believe last year got rid of the ninth graders because we, it wasn't as high of kids number, high of kids number who were tending. So we kind of put it back on the, on the front end for more first graders and second graders and stuff like that. So, and it's been super successful. We're, we filled up within the matter of a couple of weeks for those age groups. So it's definitely a service that we are filling in the community.
And the times, do you start the week after school ends or...
We start the 26th.
Start the 26th, yeah. So it's the week after, basically.
Yeah.
And do you go to the week before Labor Day or...
Camp, uh, camp ends, I believe, the 18th of August.
Oh, the 18th of August, okay.
Yeah. And we're off the 4th of July this year for camp and sailing. We'll still be at the beaches though because they'll be busy.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Mark, do you have any questions?
No, I mean, we've been really working hard to stump him and he's been doing a great job, you know? I know this was a position that you were, you've been really wanting to pursue. How's it going?
It's going good now. I've got my feet under myself and, you know, Ruthie and I are, we're, we're figuring it out as we go, but, you know, we're in a good position right now. We have a good team, so we're ready for the summer.
Your presentation tonight was terrific. I commend you for sort of being on top of, I mean, your command of everything is really quite impressive. So it's, it's great that things seem to be going well. What, what can we as a board do to be helpful to you? Is there a problem or an issue that maybe we need to pay attention to that can be helpful to rec? Because as you know, we have, there's some biases on our board here. We're very a rec, pro-rec board, if you've noticed.
No, I, I, I mean, other than getting people to come to work, that's our biggest thing. We also want to utilize Matiche Middle School as much as we can. That's a, a building that for us, we, we talk about, there was a lot of talk about mental health today and, and drugs. And I think as in recreation, we have a responsibility to get kids together in a community to keep them out of those bad areas. You know, sports and all arts and crafts, all that stuff is good for mental health. So if we can have a, you know, a space to be able to do all that, we're more than willing to, to do that.
Yeah. Yeah, I think, you know, rec is, is probably one of the more stressful areas in terms of work in the town right now. And I, I, I wish you luck in getting through the summer season, but clearly you're, you're doing a great job. And like I said, we, we just want to be helpful. If there's a problem or an issue, something that needs to get flagged for us, we just want to make sure we're on top of things. And I think tonight's a good opportunity to say, good job and keep up the good work.
Thanks. We have a great team, so it's not, not just me, but I appreciate it.
I understand, I understand, but we need good leadership at the top and you're providing it, so thank you.
Yeah.
Very similar feelings. You did a great job in the presentation. You mentioned the hiring of an assistant. Where are you in that process?
So the posting has been out for a few weeks now. We've received a lot of applications, which is great. So we're meeting this week to go over the next steps of scheduling interviews, reaching out to people, and then, you know, having those interviews hopefully in the next few weeks before the summer gets too crazy. And whoever that person is, gets tossed in the middle of the chaos in the summer, but it's a good way to learn as well, I guess.
Probably how you learned.
Pretty much, yeah.
I love the idea that you're doing junior count, junior guards. Might be an idea for the ninth graders to do a junior guard camp to really kind of grow that. But getting 28 is no small accomplishment. I'd love to see 40 because we shouldn't have any of our beaches unmanned. But thanks, I appreciate the presentation.
Dorkus?
You're doing a great job. I'm also very, very happy to hear that you're in the process with the Assistant Director.
Yeah.
Because you need your support too, especially coming up in the busy times. As they're saying, we're here for you. So please feel free to come back and, and talk to us if there's any issues or anywhere where we can help you. Sometimes the guards are put in a really tough position out there on the beaches every day and that can cause quite a burnout for your kids as well. And cooperation with Jeff and his team and then also with the police department, the fire department. So anything that we can do to help you.
Sure.
Bob, what's it, who's involved in the hiring process with the assistant?
Well, we have the Recreation Department and Human Resources and also the Assistant Town Administrator sits in on those interviews as well.
Good, good. Because you want to, you want to get as much help as possible to get the right person, that's 90% of it. If somebody likes to work.
Yeah, yes, for sure.
Good job, a little bit easier.
Yep, absolutely.
That in itself is a unique job qualification these days.
Yes, for sure.
One thing, I knew there was one thing else. The kids, particularly at the high school, are, many of them were doing is their civic project this year, the Need for a Community Center. We're hearing from the kids from a lot of different levels about how important it is after post cor, like, post-COVID in particular. And you, you were saying it too. So this is something we're going to really have to take a good look at going forward.
And I agree with you. What's out there with kids and the drugs and everything, the more activities that they have, the better. And that is no guarantee.
No, no.
I've known some kids that I've mentored that were wonderful kids, highly educated, great athletes that ended up ODing on, on drugs. I mean, this, it's a crisis. It really is. And, and so, but you have a better shot. The more involved the kid is, I think the better chance you have is that they won't go that way. So I, I agree with you and I think what you're doing and what your department's doing is very important work.
I agree.
So thanks for coming in, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
If we can help you, let us know.
Will do. So hopefully you see all the beaches.
With lots of sunscreen.
Board discussion is next. We're only an hour behind on, almost an hour behind on that one. We're going to talk tonight about the draft accessory apartment zoning bylaw amendments. And I understand there's going to be some public sessions on this. You're just kind of updating us and seeing what, if any input board members have, but then you're going to do, they call them hearing sessions these days, but you're going to have community input, people that are, you're going to talk to the same issues about, see what, what they think about the bylaw, correct?
That is correct, Mr. Chairman.
And what are, so we can get this out on the table, what are the, I know you've set the dates because I've seen them. What are those dates?
We still...
We have June 7th at Town Hall. Is that going to be a, that's, is that going to be a hybrid meeting?
Yes, it is.
It is, okay.
It's here tomorrow night.
And then June 14th at the Senior Center, that is not a hybrid meeting, correct?
It is not.
Okay. And then June 26th at Station Two is not a hybrid meeting?
That is correct. They're all at 6:00 PM.
I just want to get that out there because hopefully this will be a, an issue of community interest and we'll get people to attend some of these sessions. So tomorrow's the first one. And what time, and what time are these? Are they all at 6?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
I, I might add to that in terms of outreach, the town has done an amazing job of getting a lot of information out on the website and reaching out to many of those groups who participated in our discussions last fall, including the Housing Assistance Corporation. And just today, they sent out a blast email, the Housing Partnership for Cape Cod, announcing the three dates. So we're looking forward to having those kinds of communications out there sent by others. And we're looking forward to having some robust meetings and we hope that the public will come and join us and tell us what they think.
Well, looking forward to your, to your presentation. I, I have read the stuff that came through with our packet online over the weekend and I can see that you've done a tremendous amount of work based on where we were last time. So let's get started.
Okay. I, I just have a couple of opening remarks, Mr. Chairman, and then I'm going to turn the, the presentation over to our town planner, Kathy Williams. Before they, I do that, I'd like to just make note of the fact that our vice chair, Jim Saban, is here and another member of the board, Susan Britta, is also joining us this evening. Other members would have been here, but I understand there's a conflict with the Chamber of Commerce meeting this evening as well. So we, we really appreciate you taking the time and the opportunity to provide an update on the status of the accessory apartment zoning amendments that we, that we are preparing for special town meeting in the fall. In particular, we're interested in your thoughts, if you have any, at this point, ahead of the series of the listening sessions scheduled for this month. We think it might be helpful to the public to better understand your viewpoints on changes contained in the draft amendments that we've, that have generated the most attention over the time that we've been having our meetings. Almost every meeting of the planning board has had accessory apartment amendments for the zoning bylaw on the agenda since November. I think there may have been two meetings when it was not on the agenda. So, but some of these provisions, particularly those relating to those special permits required by the Zoning Board of Appeals, the lot size and dimensional restrictions and parking space requirements are some of the key highlights that the public has brought to our attention as ones that they would like to have addressed. As you know, our current bylaw also includes affordability and family-only provisions related to deed restrictions, rental rates and eligibility requirements. The draft amendments that we've worked through remove these restrictions on who can occupy the accessory apartments. We think that was an important, an important improvement to start.
And what can be charged?
Yes, yes. Our deliberations and discussions on the development of these amendments began, as I said, in November. We're now on Draft 12. Our goal is to prepare these amendments that are focused on increasing the number of small year-round rental units for several purposes. One, sustain our workforce. Two, prevent displacement of local residents. Three, facilitate aging in place for our seniors. And four, allow for family members, however you define them, to live in close proximity while having their own spaces to live. In your packets this evening is a, a lot of information. It is the entire package of information that we have provided to the public and that is accessible to them. There are maps, there are charts, there are the, there are, there is this presentation, there's the actual bylaw. There's the actual bylaw, that we, draft number 12, that we'll be reviewing at our listening sessions starting tomorrow. It's not our intention to review all of that with you this evening, but we would like to brief you on the presentation that Kathy is going to prepare, has prepared and that we will be giving to the public at these three public sessions. And we invite your comments and questions as we go along. So I'm going to turn it over to Kathy at this point and we'll walk you through where we are.
Thank you.
So just kind of go over the agenda. We're going to take a quick look at the zoning background, kind of what we have on the books and how we kind of got to where we are today. And then we're going to review in detail all the draft zoning amendments and provisions. And you can see that we've highlighted the important ones here with the purpose intent, ownership and rentals, general requirements, et cetera, et cetera. I think the issue of special permit versus by right option has won, has gotten a lot of attention. And we will be discussing that this evening. We're going to be looking for public input after each of the provisions to get it fresh in people's mind and also at the end. So people have a holistic view of the entire bylaw and able to provide comments at that time. And then we'll go over the next steps and where the planning board is going to be going heading towards Fall Town Meeting. So make sure that everyone understands what an accessory apartment is. We just want them to know that it is that smaller secondary housing unit that has a sleeping area, cooking area and bathroom facilities. It's located on the same lot as a single-family home. So it's accessory to your single-family home. And it can be located within, it can be located, okay. It can be located within your structure, either like some type of conversion of your basement, conversion of an upper story or conversion of a garage. It can also be an addition, something that's over your garage or attached to your house. Or it could be completely detached and separate from your, your home. So as Joanne mentioned, that we do have a current accessory apartment zoning bylaw right now. It is very limited to being family-related and family is basically defined as you need to be related to the owner by blood, marriage or law. Or it's a capital A affordable, which has those deed restrictions, rental restrictions, and also restrictions on who you can rent that apartment to. And all of the accessory apartments are currently required to have a special permit. Right now, we have about 52 family-related. They come, some come on, some go off. And we have three affordable. None of the affordable ones seem to have that deed restriction at the registry based on our investigations. Back in 2019, we did try to make some amendments by expanding the definition of family-related to being more like people who are caregiving in nature and also loosening the affordability restrictions, getting rid of the deed restriction, but still having some type of limitation on the, on the rental rates. But unfortunately, that was defeated, so we didn't make any changes in 2019. But as you know, in 2022, we got the citizens petition for an accessory dwelling unit bylaw and really kind of highlighted the desire that people had for some changes to the accessory apartment bylaw. The petition was withdrawn so that the planning board could work to develop this amendments and build the consensus and get the public participation and compromises typically done when we do our drafting of our zoning amendments. Since October, we've had 14 public meetings, including an initial listening session that we had in December. Got a lot of great public input then. We're going to be having the three listening sessions that we went over this June, as Joanne mentioned, on draft number 12. And then again, we're anticipating bringing this before annual, or Fall Town Meeting in 2023. Joanne did a great job of going over a lot of the purpose and intent. You can see on the right, these are the proposed draft amendments. We're really looking to increase the number of year-round rental units available to absolutely anyone. We also want to be sure that we're protecting the character and the appearance of our residential neighborhoods that many of us bought into. We're really trying to sustain our workforce, prevent displacement of people who've grown up on Cape Cod and can, and can no longer afford to live here. We want to facilitate people being able to age in place, maybe having a caregiver. And again, allowing family members to live together, but also having their separate spaces. Even though we are a tourism economy, we really want to support a strong and stable and diverse year-round community, which most of us are year-round residents. We also want to do a better use and expansion of our existing housing stock. We have a lot of housing stock, but we have an average of about 2.2 people per home. So we have a lot of unused bedrooms in our community. We also want to be sure that we're not making any significant impacts to our environmental resources, which can be a little bit tricky when you're adding housing and you're adding more flushes. And we, and we haven't quite gotten to searing to, to the entire community yet. One of the first big issues that we took, take, took a look at was ownership and rentals. We required that the property owners have their, that be their primary residence. We want the homeowners to be present. We want them managing their properties. We want them managing their tenants. Depending on the, your home size, or I'm sorry, your family size, the homeowner may wish to use the accessory apartment. Maybe they're a smaller two-person and they want to rent out the principal dwelling unit. So they have the option of, of being in either one. We want to be sure that the apartments cannot be sold separately and they cannot be condominiumized. We're not looking to create duplexes here. We're looking to create an accessory unit to a single-family dwelling unit. The leases are required to be for a minimum of 12 consecutive months with no, no seasonal, short-term rentals, no room renting and no subleasing. We're really trying to solve the problem we have of not having enough year-round rentals for our work, our workforce. And the owner-occupied unit cannot be rented in any, in any manner. So you get one bite at the apple. If you want to Airbnb your home, you can do that. If you want to have an accessory apartment and rent that, you can do that, but you're not going to be able to do both. And as we mentioned before, who you rent to and the rates that you charge is going to be up to the property owner. I don't know if you want to comment as we go along or you just.
Well, we'll just stop there. Does anybody have any comments or questions at this point? I don't mind stopping periodically.
I'm happy to wait, Mr. Chairman. I think the presentation's terrific.
Okay, nobody has any, so we can go.
So some general basic requirements are just that you need to have, an accessory apartment needs to be a complete, separate housekeeping unit. So you need to have the sleeping and the kitchen and the bathroom. And we do have some requirements that the kitchen have a sink and have a stove and have a minimum-sized refrigerator so that this is really a nice living unit for people. You can only have one accessory apartment per lot. And it applies to properties that have single-family homes on them now. So if you have a duplex, you wouldn't be eligible. If you're a multifamily on your property, you wouldn't be eligible. You need to have a minimum of 10,000 square foot. You need to be located in the residential zoning district, the B1, B2 business district or the medical overlay district. Just to give people an idea, I know they can't really see the map, but I think the colors speak for themselves. Anything that's in green, yellow, orange or that tan, that's our residential zoning district. So you can see we're very heavy residentially zoned. Anything along Route 28 is our, our B2 zoning district. And then we have some smaller B1 light blue peppered around town.
It's like the Phase 1 map. It's giving me flashbacks.
So some of the, some of the properties that are actually excluded are properties that already have an affordable unit on them, affordable restriction because they're not allowed to rent out any portion of their home if they have a capital A affordable deed restriction. And also lots that were created through a comprehensive permit or a Chapter 40B. That type of development already allows for typically higher-density development in that type of, of housing projects. And as always, you must comply with every other federal, state and local codes and regulations. So building code, health code are probably going to be the biggest ones. And then you need to get a certificate of occupancy from the building department. So what is, what is a property going to look like from the outside and how do we try to blend it into the neighborhoods? So the apartment, we want to be sure that it's clearly subordinate to the primary residence. So it's something that's meant to be smaller than your single-family home. We want it to blend, the property and the buildings to blend in with the neighborhood. And we also want it to be designed to be consistent with your single-family home on your property now. As everyone knows, if you're in Oakings Highway, there are design standards related to residential properties if you are north of Route 6. With regard to parking, we are requiring two parking spaces for the off-site, onsite, excuse me, parking spaces for the accessory apartment plus two for the principal dwelling unit. We've defined where we want those, those spaces to go. Where some, sometimes where the planning board's been concerned that people just park everywhere on their property or they're going to pave their front yard in order to provide additional parking. So the bylaw restricts it that you cannot have this parking within the green space in front of the main house nor within 10 feet of the side or rear property line. So you're not butting right up against your neighbor. Office, home offices and home occupations per Section 416 would be allowed in both the accessory apartment and the primary dwelling unit. That's basically these types of uses. No employees, no customers, no signs. Everything's happening inside. You're not really going to notice these types of activities from, from the outside. Some home occupations are like sewing, crafting, quilting, painting and maybe some home cooking for sale at the farmer's market or a local, or a local business. So just as we had seen before, the, the orange here is showing you what the accessory apartment would be and the blue is the primary. So you can kind of see how we're really trying to keep it to being subordinate to, to the main residence. So before we go into any discussion on dimensional standards and minimum lot sizes, I just want to go over a few definitions because we're immersed in zoning every day and many of you have been, but not the general public. So what are, what are dimensional standards? That's basically the requirements of how you're going to lay out a building on your actual property. So what's the maximum height you can have on, on your building? How far away from your property line or your neighbor do you need to be? How much of your building, how much of your lot can be covered by a building? It's called lot coverage. And what's the minimum lot size you can have in order to build on it all? And how much frontage or access do you need to, to the street? So those are all considered various dimensional standards that are included in the zoning bylaw. We talk a lot about grandfathered or non-conforming lots and structures. Yarmouth has a lot of those. And those are basically lots or structures that don't meet the current dimensional or lot size requirements from the zoning bylaw, but they did at the time they were created. So back in the day, you met the zoning bylaw, you were created, you're a lawfully pre-existing, non-conforming lot or structure. And, and you're okay and you can continue with what you're doing, but it, it just means that you're not meeting the current standards. We give a little example throughout the, throughout the presentation. I won't go into too much detail on the examples, but just to give people an understanding, a little bit better understanding of what we're talking about here. One of the other things that the planning board did was take a look at the single-family lots or homes that we have now. What's the percentage of various sizes? And you can see from this chart that we have 20% of our single-family lots are less than 10,000 square feet. 62% are less than 15,000 square feet. And 87% are less than 25,000 square feet. Right now, 25,000 square feet is our minimum residential lot size. Our typical lot size for the vast majority of town for residential is 40,000 square feet. And you can see we only have 7% of our lots are meeting that 40,000 minimum lot size. So you can see we have a lot of non-conforming lots and we have a relatively high density here in the town of Yarmouth. So the planning board took all this information and kind of decided how they wanted to have the accessory apartments laid out and on what size lots. So the, the accessory apartments are going to have to meet the current dimensional standards. So you're not going to get any grandfathering on setbacks for a new accessory apartment, whether it's an addition or it's a detached structure. The planning board took a look at different lot sizes and took a look at maybe different lot sizes for different unit sizes. So they have a minimum of a 10,000 square foot lot for a studio or a one-bedroom accessory apartment and a minimum 15,000 square foot lot for a two-bedroom accessory apartment. But no accessory apartments can contain more than two bedrooms. So this was also another hot topic and I didn't know if the, if the Board of Selectmen had any comments on, on these drafts.
This is one that came up in several of the, of our sessions where we did engage with the public where the whole notion of our concern for water quality came into play. Extra bath, extra bedrooms create more flushes because you can accommodate more people. It's just common sense that you could have two bedrooms and have four people. Now, your septic would have to be able to handle it. You'd maybe have to upgrade your septic or not. But the notion of the, the second bedroom did receive a fair amount of, of, of questions and concerns with regard to water quality and all of the efforts that we're moving forward in the town for searing. So we expect to hear quite a bit on this particular, on this particular issue. So any of your thoughts on this would be, would be welcome. This, this is one of, Kathy's right, this is, this, as much as the special permit by ZBA is one of the more, not contentious, but one that has raised a lot of questions. It's to, and, and linked to density. You could see the town has already got a lot of small lots. And so I'll, I'll leave it at that.
I know the, the health, Board of Health, you know, operates independently from the planning board, but since you raised the issue of water quality and so forth, have, have you got any input from them on, on this bylaw? That's my first question. And by way of an example, if you had, if you had a two-bedroom house and you put a two-bedroom accessory apartment on it on a 15,000 square foot lot, so you'd now have a four-bedroom house, you'd have a, a two-bedroom septic system. Would you have to replace the entire system? You wouldn't just be able to add on to it or anything like that. It would be just as a single, a freestanding house. If you, you upgraded the construction, then you'd have to upgrade the system.
You might be able to, depending on the condition of your septic system, you might be able to expand it. But that's something that would all need to be permitted through the health.
Yeah, I, I think in Yarmouth, they'll let you keep the tank if it's, if it's not leaking or anything, if it's undersized, if it's 1,000 gallons. I think the current regs require something like 15, 1,500. But so in terms of the weigh-in or the input you got from the Board of Health, how does that factor into this bylaw?
I actually inquired of the health director, Jay Gardner, and it was basically that they just need to meet Title V because that's what's on the books right now. As long as you're not asking for any type of variance, you wouldn't really be going to the Board of Health. So unless the health regulations change or they modify them in some fashion or you need some type of variance, you would need to go to the Board of Health. So it's Title V right now.
Right, but you still have to get an upgrade with engineered plans and everything else.
Correct, and that get, that goes through the health department.
It would be routinely granted, assuming there's no extreme conditions. But you'd still have to get the engineered plans and you'd still have to get an upgraded system.
Absolutely. And you would need to get an architect involved if you're going to be doing an expansion.
Depending on where you are and where the water table is, it's, that's going to be a big economic factor for a lot of people.
Correct. There's going to be a lot of.
Just whether they can proceed with this or not. Okay.
There'll be a lot of other reasons besides zoning while someone would question whether they would want to do.
But as you pointed out too, an objective is to preserve water quality at the same time. So it's a balancing act. Okay.
I think just a couple other, oops. We, we had the GIS, we worked with the GIS department to develop this map to kind of just show visually what would be eligible and not eligible. So anything that's in white is a non-single-family or otherwise an eligible lot. The pink color are those lots that are less than 10,000 square feet. So anything that's in blue is a, is a 10,000 to 14,999 square foot. So that would be eligible for a studio or a one-bedroom apartment. Anything that's green is 15,000 square feet or larger and would be eligible for up to a two-bedroom apartment. And you can kind of see in the, the gray area here, this is our Zone 2 of our areas of wellhead protection. And there are further restrictions with regard to septic systems and bedrooms in that area. As you can see over on the right, anything that's in cyan, that is the, the Zone 2 of our drinking. Basically, that's the area that's contributing to our drinking water wells. And that's the area that you want to be more conscious of what you're doing for, for development in there. So Zone 2 properties are really limited to the number of bedrooms of one bedroom per 10,000 square foot or whatever grandfathered bedrooms you might have. So if you have a three-bedroom on a 21,000 square foot lot, back in the day, you're grandfathered for three. But if you wanted to build a new home on a 21,000 square foot in the Zone 2, you're getting a two-bedroom and that's all you're getting. So if you want to create an accessory apartment in the Zone 2, in that cyan area, you probably will have to eliminate one of the bedrooms in your primary residence. So that may be another deterrent, another concern that people have because you really don't want to be increasing the number of bedrooms that are in your Zone 2. Before we have sewers.
But you're not going to be able to increase the number of bedrooms in a aquifer protection district.
What's this?
You're not going to be able to increase the number of bedrooms in an aquifer protection district.
The zone.
You can reallocate them.
Correct.
You might have a two-bedroom and you might have a one-bedroom accessory apartment in a one-bedroom primary house, but you're not going to get that extra bedroom.
Exactly.
Not going to happen.
Exactly.
Okay.
So, you know, getting to water quality, so talking about, we've kind of talked about this already. But if you're outside the Zone 2, you know, and you need additional bedrooms, could be added if you're meeting all the health regulations. We have been very successful at the annual town meeting of getting funding for the Phase 1. We're making a lot of progress. The, the build-out analysis that was done for that did include 1,000 new bedrooms throughout all eight phases over the next 40 years. So although a lot of these neighborhoods that would get the accessory apartments don't have sewer, it's going to take a little bit of time to implement, but we are making some significant progress toward, towards that. And although it's really hard to predict, we're trying to get, well, how many accessory apartments are we really going to be getting? We took a look at, people from Hack did, did some analysis and, and looked at the number of accessory apartments in some other towns. So maybe eight to 11 annually is kind of what some of the smaller towns are seeing. But Barnstable saw as many as 24 units in 2022. So the, so the next big question mark here is, well, what? So the next big question mark here is, well, what are the size of these units, and how do we keep them proportional or subordinate to the main home? So for studios and one-bedroom accessory apartments, it shall be limited to 50% of the habitable floor area of the main residence. And the habitable floor area excludes garage, all basements, whether it's finished or unfinished, unfinished attics, and common entries, porches, and decks. So it's the main bulk of your living area, except for basements, or 800 square feet, whichever is smaller. Two-bedroom accessory apartments, the same with the 50% of the habitable floor area, but they're allowed up to 900 square feet, whichever is smaller. To make sure that we're actually having functional units, regardless of the habitable floor area, we've set a minimum of 350 square feet for an accessory apartment. And at the bottom, it just gives a little example to people of if you have a 900-square-foot ranch with a 200-foot attached garage plus a 600 finished basement, that would really only be considered 900 square feet of habitable floor area because the garages and basements are excluded. So you'd be allowed an accessory apartment of up to 450 square feet under that scenario, just to give people an idea of the examples of how that might work. And then we just have some pictures to kind of show people what a 350-square-foot studio would look like, a 550-one-bedroom, then a 900-square-foot two-bedroom. So how are we going to permit these? Again, before we get into that, a couple useful definitions here of terminology that we're going to be using. By right really just means that the use and the development doesn't require any relief from the zoning bylaw, and they can go ahead and apply for a building permit. You still need to meet the building code and all other state regulations. You still need to get a building permit. You just don't need to stop at the zoning Board of Appeals first. Special permits is where you would need to get some type of relief, either that or the use specifically requires you to get a special permit. Most special permits are from the zoning Board of Appeals. There's a couple that are from the planning board, but accessory apartments would be from the zoning Board of Appeals. And that requires a public hearing with notification to a butters within 300 feet, and also the ability for neighbors to provide public comment. So what is the criteria that the ZBA is looking for for special permit approval? They really want to see, you're not causing any undue nuisance, hazards, congestions, and you're not doing any substantial harm to the established or future character of the neighborhood or town. So this is the general criteria that's in Chapter 48 that all special permits are reviewed So special permits are required for all accessory apartment uses except for three potential by-right uses, which have been carved out by the planning board. The first one is if you are fully conforming lot and structure. So this means that you're meeting the minimum lot size for your zoning district, and when you construct your accessory apartment, your existing structure and the accessory apartment are meeting all the dimensional standards and requirements. Just kind of give a little example here. This is like a 41,000-square-foot lot, and it has a 2,500-square-foot home, a habitable floor area home on it. So in this scenario, the 50% doesn't make it because it would be higher than the 900 square feet. So the 900 square feet, you could have up to two bedrooms by right, as long as all your dimensional standards are being met. And you can see on a larger lot like this, it's easy to lay out and have something for an existing home, and then to carve out a little cottage in the corner and adding some additional parking spaces for that option. The second option is if the apartment is located entirely within the primary residence except for any required means of egress required by the building code. So you could be doing some, and it also needs to be limited to a studio or one-bedroom apartment. So if you have a 12,000-square-foot lot and you have your primary homes like 12-foot off, you have a non-conforming lot and a non-conforming structure, but you have a lot that's greater than 10,000 square feet, so you're eligible to have an accessory apartment. And you can create a one-bedroom accessory apartment within a portion of your basement, and then having the means of egress would be the only thing that would be seen visible from the outside of the structure. And that needs to be located outside the current yard setbacks. And again, you need to meet all the requirements. The idea was that looking visually from the street, the only thing that you would see on the building would be any means of egress, and then any parking that would be required. And then the third, the third one is if you are adding an addition. It can either be an addition to your primary residence, or it can be a new detached structure that meets the current height and dimensional standards, so always meeting all the dimensional standards, but it's on a minimum 25,000-square-foot lot, and again, limited to a studio or a one-bedroom. And again, give a little example there. And then again, currently and in the proposed amendments, all accessory apartments require a special permit in the aquifer protection district. So these three carve-outs were the big questions, whether, there's a lot of comments that it's all required by special permit now, we should continue to require them by special permit. And there was others who said we shouldn't, we should make everything by right and not have any restrictions. So I think the planning board tried to compromise and come up with some areas where they felt by right would have the least impact, but leaving the majority a special permit.
If I could jump in right now, I've heard an awful lot from a lot of different citizens in town over the fact of special permit versus by right. And I kind of took a look at it myself from a personal perspective. You know, when I bought my neighborhood, my neighborhood, when I bought my house, I bought my neighborhood. And my neighborhood is all single-family houses. And right now, if someone is proposing to put in one of these, there is this special permit, which means I get notified. I get to go before the board and speak my feelings on it. I get to see what all the plans are for whatever it is that they're going to do. And what you're asking then, right now, is to take that away from me, that I wouldn't be able to do that in three different situations. And my question to you is, why should I be giving up one of my rights that I have right now in town? I mean, to me, it's inherent, you know, that we don't have this by-right business. I mean, I really think we have a right now, and I don't want to give that right up. I mean, that's, I've heard it from a lot of different people, and I personally feel this as well. You know, that right now, I've got that right. Yes, I do. We have special permit right now for a special, if you have, if you put on an accessory dwelling unit in this town, you have to go before and get a special permit, correct?
Correct.
Nobody in this town is allowed to build an accessory dwelling unit by right, correct?
Currently, it's correct.
Correct. So if suddenly you have people that now can do it by right, then you're taking something away from me or any other resident of the town. That's the big point for me. I mean, it's the point that I think is a big one for an awful lot of people. I don't see why we have to carve out for three different types. That's my opinion. I leave it to the other selectmen to bring up their points.
Well, I could be wrong. You guys are the ones that engineered this bylaw, but I think what they're trying to do is reach a compromise between the groups of people who say, we should be able to do anything we want on our land, regardless of lot size, regardless of anything else. And there was quite a few people early on that held that view versus it being overly restrictive. And I'm not really voicing an opinion one way or another. I'm just trying to explain perhaps the rationale of these three exceptions. In the first place, you have to have a, for this one, you have to have a 41,000-square-foot lot. Now, in acres, 43,000, was it 543,560? It's close to an acre for the first one. It's got, and you meet the current minimum lot size, and all the structures, new and existing, meet the maximum building height, meet the front yard setbacks, meet the side yard setbacks, the rear yard setbacks. So you're really meeting all of those dimensional requirements. And, I mean, how can that structure be really offensive? It's just going to, all you're going to really see is another entrance and exit if it's attached. But I'm not saying you don't have a point. I'm just saying that these carve-outs are very specific as to what you have to have to be eligible for. There's some inbuilt protections in these requirements themselves. So let's, let me see the second one there. No, the conforming and non-conforming structures. Yeah, that's everything within the existing structure. There's really no build-out of the place other than ingress and egress. I don't see anything particularly offensive about that. Let me see the third one. Okay, so that one, I think, is when you have a non-conforming lot, but the addition that you're putting on it is conforms to all of the zoning requirements. So again, these are very tightly regulated, these three exceptions by inbuilt requirements. So again, I'm not disagreeing with what you said. Special permit, yes, you'll have an opportunity to be heard.
And also to know what's going on.
But...
I mean, that's the other part, is that, you know...
When you're trying to get something, or you're trying to negotiate for something, you got to give something generally. You can't say, you know, this is the way it's going to be. There are a lot of people that feel that they should be able to build anything of right. That's really where this other group started. And I think what the planning board's trying to do is be reasonable, and in most cases, you're going to have to have, you're going to have to have a special permit. And in all cases, you're going to have to deal with the Board of Health, even in these exceptions. You know, and those restrictions may be more onerous than the zoning restrictions, because the Board of Health isn't going to care about what the planning board did or didn't do. All they're going to be concerned about is the health, the health issues and the water quality issues. So you got to look at the entire thing. But I'm not saying you don't have a point. I'm just saying that what I think is, they're trying to reach a reasonable compromise. And there's not a lot to give, really. But Mark?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Chairman. I guess my question, Kathy, is, I mean, is there a compromise? Do we think we've made ground with the folks that came in with the special petition? As this has evolved, where are we? Are we, what's your assessment? Do you think we can, are we going to have something that the folks that came in here with a fairly strong and an aggressive proposal, are they, are they going to be supportive of what we're coming up with, do you think?
I can't honestly say. They have come to meetings, but they have not spoken. I mean, Scott LaJoy's come to many meetings, but he's just been listening to things. I think that even with these amendments, this is a significant change in lessening of the restrictions compared to what we have now. If you don't vote for this because you didn't get everything you want, then you're getting nothing. You're kind of taking your ball and going home, because this makes a lot of changes. I mean, just getting rid of the affordability restrictions and being able to rent to whoever you want and rent out, rent it out for whatever you want, or reasonably can get with the market rates, that's huge. That's huge for the town of Yarmouth.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. Let me also just say, I think, I appreciate all the work and the time and energy and effort that's going into this. You know, you certainly are just not doing the bare minimum. I mean, you certainly dug into this. And I think it's terrific having all these listening sessions and giving everyone the opportunity to weigh in on this. That's not an easy thing to do. That takes time, that takes energy, that takes resources. So I think the approach that you've taken, maybe we can get you to work on the library. How's that for a project? For us, consensus building, public participation? Wow, wouldn't that be something? Okay, I'm sorry, I got a subject here. I guess I want to just, for a moment, just speak to the big picture here. All right, the Commonwealth, I'm listening to what's, I mean, listening to the legislature, I'm listening to the new governor, I'm listening to the business community, and everyone is screaming about the state coming down harder on towns that don't make progress in producing affordable housing units. I know in the past, we've done reasonably well, but there are a lot of factors that have been getting the way, in the way of our progress. I think one of the big factors that we have yet to fully comprehend is this whole Airbnb phenomenon and what it's doing in terms of shrinking the rental housing market. I think that sort of, at least as far as I'm concerned, has caught some of us by surprise. And I think in some cases is sort of works against us. On the one hand, here we are working on this, and then on the other hand, we're losing ground with this incredible sort of market phenomenon that's just taking so much rental housing out of the marketplace. And people that I know, you know, there's no, unfortunately, we don't have any analysis. The county doesn't do any real deep dive in terms of what's happening in terms of the real estate market and helping us better assess some of these conditions. So it seems like we're always playing catch-up, you know? We don't really understand what's happened until a lot of time has gone by, and we can, you can see the damage, you know? But I do think that we have to consistently make, to do this kind of work, to see where we can increase inventory, where we can create opportunities for affordable housing. Because I do believe Yarmouth will be like a lot of other communities where you're going to find the state, because this is already a discussion in with the legislature. It's already being discussed about additional penalties or sanctions, or as well as finding, you know, incentives. But clearly, this is the topic of the moment, and I applaud the fact that, you know, we've got a very active housing coordinator in town, Mary Wagon, and then with this effort and the planning board's efforts, I think we need to be sort of pushing in all, in all directions. Because I do believe that the climate that we're in is going to force the state to find other ways to sort of push for more productivity out of the towns. You see it on the MBTA communities, if you're on the MBTA line. I mean, they're talking about thousands of units in some of these communities. And if, and if those communities don't deliver, the state coming on with some pretty heavy, heavy-duty sanctions, I think at some point, some of that thinking is going to come our way, some of that pressure is going to come here. Because the governor's office, the legislators are all hearing loud and clearly from the business community that this is, this is what's hurting the Massachusetts economy. This is what's really an impact. You're hearing that here on the Cape again. I think at one of our meetings, the chamber was saying half the Cape's workforce is coming from off Cape. I mean, that's just unbelievable. Now, I lately have been spending a lot of time dealing with people who have family members in need of assisted living, and, you know, I get the sense that the interest in being able to take advantage of an accessory dwelling unit is only going to continue to grow, particularly even within families. And it may very well be that families may be somewhat put out by the current set of restrictions, but, you know, it'd be nice to be able to try to gauge to what degree some of the changes that you're talking about, to what degree they might create more opportunities for people here. So one final comment, and that is, are these listening sessions being videotaped or recorded? Will we be able to have a chance to watch them and follow them and hear the discussion?
Yes, the meeting tomorrow will be right here in the hearing room. It will be hybrid, it will be recorded, and it will be, you know, streamed live. The other two meetings, on the 14th at the senior center and the 26th at the fire station, they will be videotaped, but they obviously can't go out live, but they will need to be placed on the town website.
So we'll be able to have access to those. Because I think, I think in some cases, I think, you know, I'm going to be a little bit timid in terms of what I have to say about some of the details, because I'm genuinely interested in this conversation in the community. And I'm particularly interested in the extent to which those who came to, you know, to town meeting with a petitioned article, you know, their level of engagement and what suggestions and recommendations they might have. I'm a big believer in trying to find consensus on these things, as I know you folks are, but it requires everybody to be part of the conversation. So thank you.
Yeah.
I really appreciate this presentation. I have to be honest, I was somewhat sympathetic to the petitioners last November. I felt that pressure of needing to do something. I felt that pressure of, of needing to do something. I see the wisdom now of holding off. You guys have done an amazing job of really vetting the issues and, you know, being protective of the neighbors, as Dorcas talks about, but also recognizing the rights of the homeowners and the needs of workforce housing and needs of additional income, all of the reasons that accessory dwellings are even on the table right now. I think you've done an amazing job of compromise here. I'm curious, does it, I think we all know, there's a lot of these units that already exist that aren't on the books. Has anyone thought about clemency, trying to get them on the books?
I think right now, if you have an accessory apartment that you've created illegally and this is passed, you can come to the building department and say, I have this apartment. What do I need to do to make it legal? They have to still get building permits, because it's not just zoning that's, that's their issue. They need to make sure that it was built properly and according to building code. So people can do that now, I mean, once this passes and the use is, is allowed in order to make something that was once illegal, legal.
Okay. That's good to know, because I, I do think that there's quite a few of them out there.
Yeah. The, the problem is, is they're gonna want them to open up some things so they can inspect the wiring, inspect how, how the walls might have been constructed, you know, there's gonna be, it's not an easy lift. It's better to do it right the first time, it's gonna cost you less money to do it right the first time.
Sure.
But you're right, there's plenty of people who have done that.
Right.
But safety's a concern, especially if it's a basement apartment and there's no secondary means of egress. That's just not safe.
Correct. Okay. I think you've done a really great job of balancing the needs on both sides. I'm really looking forward to the conversation out in the community to see exactly how this is received, but I think we all know we have to do something. And yet, you guys have done a good job of really protecting many of the needs, but still giving some leeway here. So, I really like this. I think you've done a great job. I'm looking forward to the conversation. Thank you.
Dorcas, anything further?
I appreciate all the work. I don't want you to think I'm a negative Nellie sitting here. I think you've done a tremendous job, and you've addressed an awful lot of issues. This is very comprehensive. This is just the one little thing out of the whole thing that I've got an issue with. But otherwise, I mean, pointing out, for instance, that it has to be a one-year lease, you know, limiting, not any Airbnb, you know, like you, you've, you've really done an awful lot of work, and I think your presentation is excellent. And I too will be very interested to hear what people have to say.
My comments are, I, I look at where we were before you did all this work, and you've come a tremendous way, and I, I think this thing smacks of reasonability. It's, it's very well thought out. It puts restrictions on there that I think should be on there to protect neighborhoods. For example, it has to be owner-occupied, but it has flexibility. The owner doesn't have to occupy the primary residence, the owner can occupy the accessory apartment. I mean, that's, that's kind of creative, I think. As Dorcas said, you know, there's, there's a restriction on, it has to be a one-year lease, and no less than that. So that, that accommodates the need from housing on the one hand, and it also changes it from the, from an opportunity to be a, kind of a vacation situation, or, or just an income-producing thing without addressing a legitimate housing need. The work, you know, I'm not a zoning guy, but I read this with great interest, which surprised me, because it is so methodical, it's so well-reasoned, it's so structurally sensible, that, you know, I praise you highly for the work that you did, really. I think you did a wonderful job.
There are just a couple more slides. So, you know, so how are we keeping track of everything? There's gonna be a mandatory annual affidavit that needs to go to the building department, noting, you know, are you renting the, are you renting it out and documenting the 12 months, whether you're in the accessory apartment or you're in the primary dwelling unit, and, or whether a family member is living there and not being rented. It matters if it's by a family member not being rented, because if it's a rental apartment, it must be registered annually with, and inspected by the health department. If it's a family apartment, you don't need to get a rental certificate, but it's inspected every two years by the building department. That's what happens right now, and we kept that in there. And the building and health departments maintain a log of approved and inspected apartments. So what, what's the enforcement? If you're getting a failed inspection, or if someone's not providing their affidavits, and you're violating the zoning bylaw, you're subject to enforcement by the building commissioner, and it could result in the loss of your accessory apartment use. That would be a very long process to actually do that, but it's, it's not unheard of. And of course, there's always penalties and fines that can be enacted. So, what happens to the existing family-related and affordable that we already have on the books? They can continue doing what they're doing right now, and adhering to their special permits and any other restrictions or limitations they have. Or there is a provision in here where they can have the option of converting it to one of these unrestricted accessory apartments, being a special permit from the zoning board of appeals. So if you have one on the books now, you'd have to go to the ZBA with a special permit in order to convert it to an unrestricted. And then kind of what happens when, when you sell your property? Any new accessory apartments, those are the ones that are built after we enact this bylaw, if we enact this bylaw, they would transfer on sale, and the new owner would need to provide an affidavit within 45 days to the building commissioner. They would also, obviously, have to be their primary residence and adhere to some of these other requirements in order to still be eligible. If you're an existing family-related, this is in the bylaw right now, it terminates upon sale unless you put a new order, declaration of covenant within 45 days of sales. Alls that's doing is stating the new family member that would be using that apartment and then agreeing to the prior conditions. And again, if no action's taken in that 45 days, you'd need to apply for reapproval through a special permit. At that point, you would be in violation of zoning if you had someone in there. Existing affordable accessory apartments, again, it terminates upon sale unless you have a new declaration of covenant and also the affordable housing restriction agreement within 45 days of the sale. Again, no action, means you need to get another special permit, and there may be affordability restrictions that apply to rental rates and income-eligible tenants for those particular units. It's just kind of gives a brief summary, I won't go, go over it for you guys, I think you guys have...
Ask a question on the new owner affidavit. Is that simply gonna say that the new owner's gonna occupy it as a primary residence? What's involved in that affidavit?
That particular affidavit would be, are you gonna be renting it? I mean, A, you need to make sure that you're the primary owner and that you're still eligible and all of those things. But are you gonna be renting it? Are you gonna be, have family members gonna be going in there? If you're renting it, we'll wanna see the lease. So all the things that are required in the annual affidavit would be required, plus probably, probably a box that says you're adhering to section...
But I mean, somebody that just buys it today wouldn't necessarily have a tenant that quickly.
Correct. Correct.
Should they have just 45 days that can't, that can't be extended? I'm saying, what if they're really using good faith efforts to find a tenant, but they don't really like the tenants that they see?
Yep.
Because they don't have creditworthiness, or they have, you know, bad references or something like that? The person's gonna occupy it as a primary residence, but I'm, I'm not so sure that's a, enough of a window to get all that done that quickly.
That's a good point.
He might have to do some repairs to the apartment, he might have to paint it, it might be, you know, he might have to do some work to, to get it ready for the new tenant. I, I just would give some thought to possibly extending that or allow some process for extension.
That's a good point. And then just kind of where, where, what we're gonna be doing next. We're gonna have all these three great listening sessions and hopefully get a lot of great information, and then July and August, the planning board's really gonna be digesting that, and any input from, from you guys from, from this evening, and seeing whether they wanna make any additional modifications to, to the draft. And we were going to be having our formal public hearing sometime in early September, which we're required to have, and based on the input from now, consider any further amendments. And then they'll vote to recommend the amendments, and come and present to you guys for your recommendation, and putting it on, placing it on the warrant for the 2023 Fall Special Town Meeting. And then hopefully, we will be moving and passing the article at Special Town Meeting, which I would love to know when that might be. I'm hope, [laughs], I'm assuming it's like near the end of October, but I'm not sure if we've set a date yet. And that's the link to the town website, where you can find all, all the great information that we've talked about.
And that's our story.
And that's our story.
A great story. Thank you very much. We really appreciate you coming in tonight and giving us a great presentation, and again, thank you for all the hard work that you've put into this.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Did we get that done? We did. Mark, remember you had some, on the diff, you wanted a motion drafted?
Yeah, I wanted to basic...
More specificity? Well, Bill is out, he's on, he's having a few vacation days, so Bob contacted me today on this and said, well, I'll give it a stab, and if the board likes the motion, then we can act on it, and if not, we can defer. So, this is the first I'm seeing of it. Keep in mind that this isn't gonna be the document itself, this is just the form of the motion, which I am assuming Bob is, was lifted out of the underlying document, correct?
Yes, that's correct. I just tried to be very specific so we could be clear on the appointments, and it will, there will also be bylaws that will be developed to, to govern the...
I think one of your concerns, Mark, was that these different contributing positions, like Assessor, Assistant Town Administrator, Finance Committee, could only make a recommendation, that they couldn't designate a person to be on the board. They could recommend to the Board of Selectmen, but the Board of Selectmen would have the final say. I think that was one of your chief concerns, and, and mine as well.
Well, it's still a little bit unclear.
So, okay. So you wanted to defer on this?
Yeah, I still think this needs more work.
All right.
I'm also very, very concerned about who's actually, is this a committee that we're creating that will operate independently of us?
Well, I, I think they would, but they would be reporting to you annually.
Right. We don't review the bylaws, nor do we review and sign off on any kind of operational parameters, rules of order. They can pretty much do what they want.
All right, so why don't we do this? Let's take it, let's take a further look at it and come back at the next meeting. And in the meantime, if anyone wants to do any drafting, is this, if you could send this in Word, Bob?
Sure.
And then we can look at this language? Because I, I don't wanna sit here for a half an hour, you know, we can do this on our own time and, and...
In, in the past, when we've approved committees, we've approved, it's, it hasn't been in the form of a motion, it's actually been, we've approved a charge, a committee charge, right? I mean, I'm, I'm, I remember when we created the, the Water Resources Advisory Committee, I'm looking that up right now. And what we did was, we created a charge for the committee.
Well, yeah, I mean, if you wanted to do that, for example, in the first paragraph, where it talks about the Operation Management District Improvement Finance Committee, you could put in something like this, in accordance with the charge, you know, developed by the Board of Selectmen, for example. And then...
Could do that.
You know, that leaves that open, you don't necessarily have to have the charge in place at this point in time.
And it wouldn't take a lot to make this into a, like a charge, and then your motion could be just to approve that.
Exactly. That's, that's what I would prefer to do. I would rather want the...
We could do that, we could do that. So let's, let's give this another look next meeting.
Yep.
And I think Dorcas has some business for us.
I do indeed. I move that we reappoint David Bernstein and Pat Mulhern as regular members to the Conservation Commission. These appointments are for a three-year term, which will run through June 2026.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. I don't think without, with our non-participating selectmen, we need to do roll call anymore, right?
Right.
Okay, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? That passes 4-0. Next is Community Economic Development Committee.
I move to appoint Courtney Butler and Danielle Newcomb as regular members of the Community Economic Development Committee. These appointments are for a three-year term, which will run through July 2026.
You have a second?
Second.
What a motion. Oh, did you, do you...
I'll make the motion.
Second.
We went back to the...
What a vote.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry, yes, that would help, wouldn't it?
Mike, do you wanna do a vote on that?
Okay, so who's moving that?
I am.
Mark is?
Yep.
Okay. And Dan, you got a second?
Yep.
All right. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? So that passes 4-0. Is the next one, uh...
The next one, we asked...
Con, Conro?
Right. We asked the Conservation Commission to let us know what their recommendation would be for their representative, and that we have heard back from them. They took it up at their meeting and recommended 6-0 on June 1st, 2023. So I move to appoint David Bernstein as the Conservation Commission's representative to the Water Resource Advisory Committee. This appointment is for a one-year term, which will run through June 2024.
We have a second?
So I'll second that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Passes 4-0. Next is minutes, March 23rd, 2021, July 19th, 2022, and August 16th, 2022.
Mr. Chairman...
Do you wanna move any of those minutes?
I move those following minutes, March 23rd, 2021, July 19th, 2022, August 16th, 2022.
All right, so we have a motion for approval of those three minutes that Mark just mentioned, sets of minutes, I should say. Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
I just have to abstain from one that I wasn't at, I guess.
I have to abstain from March 23rd, 2021.
All right, let's take them separately. Mark?
All right, I'll take up...
Let's move March 23.
Right.
So, Mark, Mark's moving March 23 minutes for acceptance. I'll second that motion. Does anyone have to abstain from that vote?
I do.
Okay. So all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And one abstention, right, Dorcas?
One abstention, yes, I'm sorry.
So three in favor, one abstention on March 23. So, Mark, you wanna move the July 20, the July 19th, 2022 minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Anybody have to abstain on that?
I do.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. No opposition and one abstention, right, Dan?
Yep.
Okay, so that passes by a vote of 3-0, one abstention. Uh, Mark, you wanna move the August 16th?
August 16th approval.
Second.
And Dorcas, you're second there?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Any abstentions on that? Okay. Any abstentions on that? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? And passes by a vote of four zero. Individual items. Mark, any individual items?
Did we do our agenda items yet, or are we going there next?
We didn't do it. I didn't see Agenda Review on here, actually.
It's here.
Was it? Did I didn't miss? Did I miss it? Oh, yeah, I did miss it. Agenda Review is before that. Yes, yes, sorry.
A topic that I think it, I'm not sure what kind of agenda item it should be or consist of. I'll leave that to the town administrator. But I would like to get briefed on the consultant that has been hired or is likely to be hired for the library planning project, the one that is tasked with finding consensus on a plan. So it'd be helpful to know just who that is and their scope of work. I will admit, the reason why I'm interested in it is because I've watched a rerun of our last meeting. And it's clear to me that it's going to be a challenge, given where that group is coming from, to find consensus. Because they've pretty much made up their mind. I mean, and they said that over and over again in the meeting, so I think it would be helpful to not only know more details, but at some point, hear from the consultant.
Okay.
Because I think a lot's riding on this consultant, quite frankly. They're going to have to be super good at what they're doing because they're walking into a tough situation. So I just want that on the agenda, Mr. Chairman.
Just moving ahead quickly to the 27th, we got the scholarship kids coming in. That's always fun. We have a special entertainment license for Castleberry Labor Day Weekend Craft Festival at the John Simpkins Field. We have a hearing, special entertainment and alcohol, beyond the bounds season closure at Seaco Beach. We got a hearing, change of manager, and shouldn't be very lengthy. We have a CEDC update, tourism fund program, second water rate hearing, discussion vote municipal vulnerability preparedness plan update. We got Maticke's Middle School Reuse Committee draft charge. That was supposed to be on tonight, but Bill wanted to be a part of that, and he couldn't be here, so we kicked it over. The nip bottles discussion.
That's a lot for one night.
Board of Selectmen chart, I mean, discussion possible about wastewater land use control. We're going to have to move some of this stuff, I think.
That's two meetings, I think.
Yeah, but we'll-
Isn't it?
Unless you guys have a preference, I can work with Bob on this. We can move some of this into July 11th.
We have to do the town administrator evaluation.
We have to do that evaluation. Oh, yeah. By the way, we were looking, we were looking to do that on the 27th. I did hear from Mark. He submitted, and I'm not pressuring anybody. We got, we got time.
I just didn't pass it in.
Yeah. Mark did his. I did one. But I'd rather have you take your time and do it, you know?
Yeah, my only criticism of it is there's several questions in there that we don't have the information.
You're going to get those, you have those evaluation forms. You're going to get them to me once you fill them out.
Yeah.
Or you can give them to the office and ask them to scan them to me. I don't really care how I get them, whatever's more convenient for you. And then I'll put them together. So, yeah, we got to get that done. That's a, that's a good reminder. So we'll have to, what are your, let me ask the board this. What are your, scholarships got to stay, right? And the licensing hearings, again, I commend our licensing administrator. She's doing a great job in spacing these out, just tons of these things. This is the season when everybody wants licenses and modifications of existing licenses. And she and I had a discussion, and she on her own motion told me a couple of weeks ago, she goes, I've been trying to not overwhelm you. I'm trying to pace you and maybe not do more than three in a night. And I think she's doing a good job. I'm sure, I'm sure all the applicants wanted it done yesterday, right? But she's, she's being diligent about the scheduling, so we should, I think if we can, we should move forward with the Maticke's Middle School Reuse Committee draft charge. I think that's kind of important. We've been talking about this NIPs bottle thing for a long time. I think if we can, we might want to discuss that.
You know, for the NIPs bottle thing, I was speaking with a gentleman named Alan Robinson, the chairman of the Falmouth Solid Waste Advisory Committee. I've been talking to him about a host of sort of regional waste management issues. Very, very smart individual. Falmouth did the nip bottle by law, and they've had tremendous success with it. I told them that there may be some interest on our board to actually hear from people in some communities that have actually had some success with this, and-
It's never a bad idea to talk to people who've been through something like that.
Yeah, so he's, he's willing to come. And what's good is because we do the hybrid meetings. I think it'll be a lot easier to actually get people from the towns that have been doing it to join us on a meeting at a certain time. We get to them, they're there. So I would just, I'm happy if the board's willing to help facilitate that and work with Bob in making arrangements to get a couple of folks from towns that have actually done this.
So I think once we pare down this June 27th, we're not going to probably even have a lot of extra room on July 11th, really.
No, probably not.
Going to fill that up, don't you think, Bob?
Yes, especially with the housing issues coming up.
Yeah, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I have, I have no objection or problem if, if we, I know we typically decline to meet on the days after Mondays. But, you know, if we need to meet on the 20th, you know, I'm, if we have to meet, I know we're looking at moving things around, but on the other hand, if we need to have another date, I'm open to that if, if the board is, is interested.
Yeah, because we already have next week off.
Right, exactly. So it's sort of like, and then, you know, so-
I think though, I don't know if we'll need any, any staff, but that's, that's a holiday for staff, right, Bob?
The 19th is, but the 20th-
It's just, it's harder to put the agenda together.
Yeah.
Well, you've already got your agenda right. Half of it's right there.
So I don't know.
Yeah.
Do you guys want to meet the 20th? I'll, I'll do whatever the board wants to do.
I have no problem with it.
Yeah, why don't we do that?
Mark?
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine. I think, but, you know, we don't want to create a nightmare for staff. But if there's some low-hanging fruit from this huge list that we have for June 27th, and we could put that on there, I'm, I'm happy to do that.
Because now we've moved DIF over as well.
Yeah.
To add that into this.
Right.
That's true too, yeah.
Yeah, and some of these-
It's not, DIF's not, yeah. I don't know how quickly we'll, we'll get to that. Well, that'd be a couple of weeks. Yeah, we probably could get to it by then. But we're going to have to do some juggling on this, even with that other date. What else does anyone, Mark's talking about library consulting, which I think is a good, a good item to get on the list. Anybody have anything else?
Mr. Chairman, I really would like to have water come back in. We had a horrible summer last summer. And just make sure that we're aware of water conditions. Yeah, absolutely.
Here we are, it's June.
Yeah, we're not getting much rain.
May was very dry.
Right. So it's, we need to put that on the agenda in anticipation that some issues could emerge.
Get a water update?
Yeah. Water out date and question, and I think a drought report, right?
Yeah.
I think we just need to think about where we can slide that in, because we may actually have to-
Where we are. I mean, I don't know if we ever actually came out of the drought declaration.
We did, but it was kind of like, you know, like in the dead of winter, I think.
Okay. I never heard it, so.
Okay, so I got those two.
Bob, wondering if we can have, it's been, what, 15 months, if we can have some update on 6A? Where the consultant is with that project or? I just, I think it would be good to, for people to know that we're actually doing something on it. Because it's had dormant for a couple of years prior to.
You know, I feel like we have so many things going on, it's almost like we need to have facilitated discussion, throwing all the stuff on the wall and figuring out, you know? Am I, is it me? Is that just me, or did you feel?
No, we're taking on everything. Taking on all comers.
Exactly. Yeah, I just feel it's almost overwhelming. It's almost like, maybe we need to go to the Simpkins Library Camp out there on a Saturday morning and just kind of regroup. It's kind of like a regroup type of meeting.
We talked about doing that this summer.
We should.
What do you think?
Yeah, no, we need to do it.
Really, I think we need to regroup, because I think we're just, the volume of what we're dealing with is just, it's getting overwhelming. We haven't even talked about wastewater in the next phases and, right, we just appropriated $207 million. And we haven't had boo of a discussion about where that money's going.
Well, Jeff was talking about starting the construction in September, so we should probably get him on the list back in, in August and see what's going on.
Well, also, but I think we, as a board, need to get an update from our team on how that money's been allocated, where that is, how much has been spent.
All those contracts are in yet, are they, Bob? He had three contracts that were out.
There's just a lot going on. And then, you know, some of the stuff has come in high.
Remember, you were telling us about each of those three-phase contracts? I don't think any of them are in yet, are they?
No. Just the, you know, we got the results of the first two.
Those two.
Is RAC still a meeting?
They are. Yeah. And I think Spiro either. I think Spiro Mitrochostis has been the vice chairman, and is sort of serving in that capacity. But I think they're anxious to get David Bernstein on so they can reorganize and elect a new chair.
And we've also got the land use control regulations. That's coming up on your agenda on the 27th. Unless we move that to the 20th, that could be one of the things.
I'm very comfortable not necessarily deciding tonight which gets moved where, but I'm very comfortable with leaving that up to the, to the chair and to the, the town administrator.
We'll work it out.
Now that we've got another meeting stuck in there to-
Yeah, I just think just to soothe, because I mean, here it is, it's quarter of 11.
So what I'm hearing on the new things is Mark with the library consultant, a water update slash drought report, and a 6A update from Dan.
Yep. And then I think we need to get a wastewater, at least a report on the-
Status of the wastewater.
Article 18, right?
Yeah.
I mean, I think that's, rather than make it an all-encompassing discussion, if we could at least talk about Article 18 and what we've been doing.
Okay.
Because I think, I mean, 207 million is no small chunk, you know? Buckle of money.
When was that? When was that measure by the Chamber of Commerce to tack on a a fee on the, on the rentals to support the chamber?
And their marketing?
I brought some material on that, too. I had that.
Were you going to address that in your report? I remember we talked, were you going to talk about that? Okay.
I'll clean this up. They appeared before the town managers a couple of weeks ago, and I have some material from that meeting.
We're going to end up voting on this in due course, right?
Right. And they haven't got a petition. They're not ready to come forward yet. But the details of it are that the Cape Cod Chamber is promoting a 1.5% additional surcharge for hotel motel tax, which would generate 4 to 5 million annually for the chamber. This is the Cape Cod Chamber of Commerce, not Yarmouth, for marketing efforts. So that's quite a windfall. And the, the process has to be initiated by a petition of the actual hotels and motels. And it also has to be supported by a resolution from each of the member towns. So it would have to be submitted to this board. It can't go around the board. And, you know, I mean, there's the, the basic concern is, we won't really bemoan the issue of if the hotels want to take on additional marketing through the chamber. But one potential conflict is that we still have significant problematic issues with the Cape Cod Water Protection Fund that is funded through a 2.75% surcharge on the short-term rentals and hotel motel excise tax. And we know that fund is significantly underfunded to meet the challenges of the individual communities, you know, for wastewater. And we've had a lot of discussions with, you know, whether it be the governor's office or the legislative delegation of refunding that. And I know one of the areas under consideration is potential additional surcharge under that. So I think it would be difficult to keep adopting new surcharges until we at least address that threshold issue and know what the future of that fund is going to be. Because we, we don't want to have this potentially in conflict with the wastewater funding that we need. But, you know, certainly, you know, the region could benefit from additional marketing.
Right. And there may be some value, quite frankly, in getting ahead on the Cape and Islands Water Protection Fund. In that regard, there will be a discussion of the Cape and Islands Water Protection Fund on the 13th. I am this board's representative to the fund's management board. And we have front and center a plan to recapitalize that program. I'm a believer that on the table should be a bump in the Airbnb tax. And, and, and that should be definitely on the list of things we consider. But I'll be able to report after, whenever our board meets following that management board meeting on the 13th, yeah. But I'm with, I'm with, I'm with the town administrator completely. I think that's got to be our focus.
Yeah, no, I agree.
I mean, yeah, we're counting on that.
All right, so I'm going to just, so we're done with the agenda review. And anybody have any individual items? Good. Town administrator, do you have anything else, Bob?
We covered a lot of it. I really wanted to bring up and make sure everyone, you know, has this material on the Chamber of Commerce. I think it's coming. It's going to be very important. We're going to have to keep our eyes on that. I wanted to update you a little bit on the opioid situation. And I really wanted to thank Mark Forrest for his assistance in what turned out to be, I thought, a very difficult meeting with the Attorney General's Office. I felt that they were singularly unhelpful in resolving, you know, the problem. You know, we, we met with them and, you know, and they had said things like, well, I don't know if it's possible to look under the hood of that formula. They didn't want to even look at the formula when we presented significant data that shows communities with the same population, same opioid-related overdose fatalities. The same statistics in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts receiving over three times as much as the town of Yarmouth. They, they did pledge that they were going to look at the numbers. I told them right out, I said, this has to be a mistake. This is a mathematical error. You can't show me a formula that calculates this. And they said that they would get that, but the key thing, I think, that was disappointing is, was really under the impression with the huge sums of money that were sent to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts through that similar formula, that the Attorney General's Office had some control over those fundings. And what, what they said unequivocally was that they have zero funding. 100% of it has been sent over to Health and Human Services. So we asked them, look at their formula, try to give us some, some support on it. Since then, I've had an additional meeting with the Yarmouth Substance Abuse Committee and Jay Gardner. And we've split up the duties that those folks are developing contact with Health and Human Services. And we're going to outreach them directly with our plan and try to get access to some of that state funds, which is a significant amount of money to make the town whole and, and enable us to carry out some of our programs. And I took on the action of working with the National Opioid Settlement Board, which is, it's like a private nonprofit corporation that's been set up for this process to do these. And I contacted them and I filed an appeal of the towns- I contacted them and I filed an appeal of the town's, receipt of the town's percentage. And because the funds that we've been getting now have only been a couple of settlements. But what they're purporting to do is have this ratio of what percentage that we get of the share that goes to Massachusetts for all future settlements.
Yeah.
And so I filed a formal appeal. I received an acknowledgement of my appeal, but not a word back on, on any action of it. And we're just going to, I'm going to continue to work together with the Y-SAC, with Board of Health, and, and the state agencies, and try to get us in front of them again. And if I can get, you know, an audience with them, I'll include Mark again. He's really quite effective in, in these meetings. So I thank you for that, and your patience and, and all of it. And we're just going to keep pushing as hard as we can to see how we can get that resolved. And I also, I wanted to mention the PFAS litigation, and I think I already reported on that. But this town, at least for where we sit, I think our actions were extremely timely, because we had our complaints filed before any settlements or anything were reached. And so we're right in the forefront of that. But, oh, boy, am I going to look at that formula when they come up with it. I mean, you saw, we have 20 million on the table today. That's just today. So we're, we're looking at that very closely. But I, I do want to think, and, and I did think that was a great presentation. In fact, I just wanted to say, all the staff members tonight, the, I was referring specifically to the, the water, the presentation with the, the new software and the detail that went into that. I thought all the staff members that presented this evening, though, were just so well-informed. And, you know, we go over this stuff, and I was very impressed. I thought it was great. And I'll cut it there. You guys do know, though, that we've been, I'm so glad to see Bill taking a few well-earned days off. Even very recently, since we got through town meeting, we've been hammering the grants, any available funding that can help support the wastewater. We've put a grant application in. He worked so hard on over $10 million for the Mass Works Program. We're working with community development to get some planning funds to support what we're doing with affordable housing and the local comprehensive plan. We're trying to get additional, the area of Route 28 that was not proposed for the tip, to get that designed. So a very aggressive stance by the town of Yarmouth on, on these funding, actually on, on everything. We've been real aggressive lately. So it's good to see it happening, and.
We got a lot going on. And I, and I would agree. I mean, I think the staff work tonight that was on display was superb.
Oh, it was excellent. Excellent.
Superb. Totally. I don't know how Kathy Williams absorbs all that stuff, you know?
Draft 12.
Huh?
Draft 12.
Draft 12, yeah.
I mean, the, the thing is, is listening sessions, listening to the public.
Want to talk just a couple of minutes about the consent agenda?
Yes.
Let's get that approved.
And the, the key item there is, on the hearth and kettle, they had their application returned, and it required an amendment of the application to reflect no outdoor seating. There is also a change required in the beneficial interest in lease information. And so we worked with them and, you know, re-advertized those. I, I felt they were all fairly minor amendments, so it made it to the consent agenda.
I think one of them was, for example, was it, there was a different name on the lease for the owner than there was on something else. Just a lot of little, small stuff. So they did have to re-advertise, but we decided it's not worth a hearing. But we do have to have a vote.
And there's a stop sign at Nottingham Bay, Nottingham Drive at, up at Bray Farm, which was originally approved, I guess, in 2021, but there was a problem with the paperwork. So we just reauthorize that. And I have the detail in there on that planning grant, that because of the deadlines, you know, we were unable to have the board vote that. But it's basically $100,000 in helping us work our mixed-use strategy for development that, you know, was in that bylaw, the village-based bylaw that we can't get folks to file under. And also, I thought it was great that, that we were able to put in, and I really pushed for this, to have community outreach funds in here for the zoning and, and the local comprehensive plan. And that's just going to, just going to help us. And I, and I think, I hope you see how, you know, what we did with the wastewater project is filtering into the whole organization for permanent, I think, improvements in the way that we conceive of public outreach, the priority that, that it has. And, and that's something that's going to be permanent. So I'm really happy about that.
So, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move the consent agenda.
Second.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes four zero.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move to adjourn.
Second.
All is in favor?
Aye.
We adjourned.